Meeting to order, and it is June 24th. Is my mic working? No?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll try to speak louder. I don't know if the mic's working that well. We'll call this meeting to order, and we will do a roll call.
Mayor John Harabedian.
Here.
Mayor Pro temp John Kapochea.
I'm here.
Council members Denise Delmar.
Here.
And Jean Goss.
Here.
And Council member Rachel Iris Mandy is absent and excused this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmember Denise Delmar will be leading us in our pledge and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is my mic working? Can you all hear me back there? Okay, good. So, next year, next week is the 4th of July, and I thought it might take a little moment to talk about our founding fathers. So, I'm talking about John Adams and Thomas Jefferson right now. And I thought it was very interesting that in the summer of 1776, it was a harrowing time for the British colonies in America. Open warfare with the mother country had erupted, and a year earlier, and the future was filled with political and military uncertainties. In this tense climate, the Continental Congress met in Philadelphia with the intention of voting for independence from England. In anticipation of this vote, the Congress selected a committee to draft a Declaration of Independence. The committee, composed of John Adams, Benjamin Franklin, Thomas Jefferson, Robert Livingston, and Roger Sherman, in turn entrusted Thomas Jefferson to write the Declaration. So, how did they entrust Thomas Jefferson to write this? Well, according to James Adam, who wrote a letter in 1882 to Timothy Pickering, this is how they decided that Thomas Jefferson would draft the, our Constitution. The subcommittee met, John, John Adams wrote, "To Jefferson propose to make, for John Adams to make the draft. I said, 'I will not. You should do it.'" And Thomas Jefferson said, "Why? Why do I need to do that? You should do that." And John Adams came up with this conclusion. Reason first, you're a Virginian, and Virginians ought to appear at the head of the business. Reason second, I am obnoxious, suspect, and unpopular. You are very much otherwise. Reason third, you can write 10 times better than I can. "Well," said Jefferson, "if you are decided, I will do as well as I can. Very well. When you have drawn it up, we will have a meeting." So committees were working pretty much like they were are now, right? Those many years ago. So Jefferson, at the age of 33, began his work on July, on June 11th, and, and came up with a number of drafts. On July 2nd, the Continental Congress voted for independence and refined its Declaration of Independence before releasing it to the public on July 4th. Thomas Jefferson and John Adams were the last surviving members of the original American revolutionaries who had stood up to the British Empire and forged a new political system in the former colonies. And on July 4th, 1826, at the age of 90, Adams lay on his deathbed while the country celebrated Independence Day, and his last words were, "Thomas Jefferson still survives." He was mistaken, however. Jefferson had died five hours earlier at Monticello at the age of 82. Fifty years earlier, on July 3rd, John Adams wrote to his wife Abigail about the day, next day's Declaration of Independence, and this is what he said. "I apt to believe," Adams wrote, "that it will be celebrated by succeeding generations as the great anniversary festival. It ought to be commemorated as a day of deliverance by solemn acts of devotion to God Almighty. It ought to be solemnized with pop and parade, with shows, games, sports, guns, bells, bonfires, and illuminations from one end of this continent to the other from this time forward and forevermore." So I'm very proud that Sierra Madre does all of those that, that John Adams wanted us to do. Happy 4th of July, everybody.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, will get a report out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session with legal counsel to discuss a matter of threat of litigation. The council received a briefing from the city attorney, but, and direction was provided, but no action was taken.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Mayor, may I ask that we move up item number eight? Because I'm thinking some of the folks here would like to talk about that.
Sure.
Perhaps to, right above, when we talk about our appointment of applicants, so right underneath number four.
So eight would move to five. I have no objection with that.
And I think the other ones before that will go very quickly.
Any objection to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Can I get an approval of the amended agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, approval of the minutes.
I do have, can I just give it to you after, just a couple of little things, words got switched, which changed the meeting.
Yeah, the mics are a little, a little testy today.
Okay, can you hear me?
Just have to talk loud.
It's on, but it's still, okay, well, I could, I really don't have a problem talking really loud, so I can do that.
We'll start yelling.
I'll, I'll, just a couple of minor changes, and I'll give them to you right after the meeting. I've got it marked.
Any other changes to the minutes?
None.
Can I get an approval, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, Mayor and City Council reports. We will start to my left. Councilmember Goss.
I had a report right here. There it is. Try to keep it as short as possible. We have a long agenda. I attended my first senior committee, Community Commission meeting as a new council liaison recently, and received a very warm welcome, and it was a very productive meeting, and I'm just thrilled to be working with that group. Also, my first meeting with Chief Gianoni as council liaison to the Police Department, and I'm really looking forward to continuing that, that set of conversations about every couple of months we'll get together. It's mainly informative, and I'm hoping that I can bring some of that into council meetings.
Fans here.
Yeah.
Knock, knock.
Are the fans really loud back there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we might just have to pass around the handheld mic then, because these, these mics aren't really working.
Yeah, it sounds like we're gonna have to do that.
Yeah. There's also, there's seats in the front, too. You know, if you guys want to come up, you'll definitely be able to hear us up here. So, I see no rush to the front?
Are we waiting for the answer?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak louder. Can you hear me now? Okay. All right. And of course, I'm excited about the 4th of July parade and all our 4th of July festivities here in town. And I would like everyone to know, my colleagues at Village Vine Online would like everyone to be aware that we are, Village Vine Online is going to be doing a live video webcast of the parade again this year. Rich Johnson, Tina Salvatore will be our hosts. At 10 o'clock, just go to villagevine.org. You can find the link to the webcast. And after it's over, you can go in there anytime. It'll be up probably for the next six months at least. So, people are out of town on vacations. It's an opportunity to see our parade when you're not actually available to do it. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Delmar.
No report for me. Just looking forward to the 4th of July.
I have no, can you hear me? I have no report.
No report. Okay. And we'll now open up public comment for items not on the agenda. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes. I'm usually not a stickler, but it seems like we have some people here today to, to talk.
Amy Pettenen, President of the Sierra Madre Historical Society, 630 Oak Crest Drive.
Before the buccaneer was the local watering hole, there was a jumping joint at the foot of the Mount Wilson Trail, where the hooch was smooth, the girls were fast, and the reputation for delicious chicken and ravioli dinners was unsurpassed. Lizzie's Trail Inn, as the joint was called, remains today as one of Sierra Madre's historical museums. In celebration of this rich and colorful history, the historical society is holding its second annual Chicken and Ravioli Dinner this Saturday, June 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Mount Wilson Trail Park. Tickets are $30 and are still available at Savor the Flavor, Mary's Market, Arnold's Hardware, the library, and I even brought tickets this evening. We hope to see you all there, and we're expecting Lizzie to be there to entertain the crowd.
Yeah, wait a minute, wait a minute. Excuse me, excuse me. This is not mine, and I just want to make sure that you all know that. So, excuse me, I heard my name, so I thought I'd just come on down. Hi there.
Hi. This is not mine. I did find it up at Richardson House, but, you know, it was my second husband's, and I, I just claim nothing to it, so do not arrest me this time. But I just, I want to, oh, well, don't you all look so nice. I want to introduce myself. My name is Lizzie, well, actually, my name is Elizabeth Louise Adler Weiss Stople McElwain. But, you know, who's gonna remember all of that? I don't even remember all of that, so you can just call me Lizzie. And I want to invite you up to my dinner. I'm gonna start cooking tomorrow, and we're gonna be cooking for, forever, it seems like, but we're gonna have some really good chicken, and we're gonna have some really good ravioli, and we're gonna have some good times up there at my place. And if you want to find out about my history, and about my two sons, and about my girls that lived up above Lizzie's, yes, just come on over, and I'll sit down at one of the tables while you're eating, and I'll come and just explain everything to you. I'll tell you my story. Thank y'all.
Is that moonshine in the bucket?
No.
Well, if it is, I want you to share it.
I know, really, can we share?
Use it tonight.
Well, you come see me on Saturday. You come see me on Saturday. We'll make it. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Former Mayor Nancy Walsh. Met a mayor, how are you?
Well, I can't really follow. I'm fine, but I'm having, this is tough act to follow.
Yeah.
Walsh on Grove, I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce this evening. You might have seen an ad in the Mount Wilson, I mean, Mount, Mount Wilson, Mountain Views News on the front page. Locals love you more. Locally owned independent merchants return 68% of their incomes to your local economy. National chains, 43% or less, and online sellers, zip, nada, zero, nothing. So who loves you, baby? It's your local businesses. And the chamber is supporting the 350 Project, and you can find that online, 350, and encouraging residents to spend $50 a month for three months, that's all summer, you can only have fun, with long days, and spend $50 with our local merchants and in the eateries. So, I'm here to encourage everybody to get out and enjoy our local businesses and support them, because they need us and we need them. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our friends from CARE. Yes. Good, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Doyle. I live at 636 West Sierra Madre Boulevard in Sierra Madre, and I'm here on behalf of Sierra Madre Clean Air Residential Environments. At the February 25th meeting of this council, there was a discussion regarding moving forward with the smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance, and it was decided then to table the item. As a resident and CARE Coalition member, I would like to ask that this item come back to council for further discussion as soon as you're able to do that. Some of the council members who are no longer in office voiced concerns last February about enforcement of such an ordinance. There was concern about enforcement, including burdening the Police Department with smoking calls. The fact is that most of the time, when a citywide smoking law is in place, as in other cities surrounding us, the controversy is initially handled by the landlords and the tenants. There are terms that are required to be in the, in the leases, and that's how it generally is handled. If a tenant continues to have a problem with smoking with another tenant, the landlord can call upon an appointed agency, such as a code enforcement or Police Department, to come out and address the issue. Now, I think our small town has a great spirit of volunteerism, and I think that we could set up a, an email address to take those complaints, have volunteers man it, and be the first to respond to those complaints. The bottom line is, though, that once there's an initial ramp-up of a smoking ordinance, there will be more awareness, and generally, there will be compliance. And that's what's happened in most of the cities here in the San Gabriel Valley that have enacted this law. Most people obey the law and encourage others to do the same, and actually, that's, if you think about it, that's why people generally wear seat belts. It becomes a habit, because people are telling each other to do this, and I suggest that the same thing would happen with smoking in multi-unit housing. Now, recently, Sierra Madre was named one of the top 10 safest places to live in California due to lack of serious crime and violence, according to Movado's real estate blog. Now, I feel fortunate to live in a city that is considered one of the safest in California. However, I find it unfortunate that so far, the city has not taken steps to reduce harmful secondhand smoke in people's homes, to improve upon the community's public health, as some of our neighboring cities have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Doyle. I also live at 636 West Sierra Madre Boulevard. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Also, thank you to the existing council members who listened to us in February, and thank you to Mr. Goss and Ms. Delmar for actually listening to us. You went door-to-door and patiently listened to our concerns. You actually met with us, and so did Ms. Iris Mandy. I would just like to further two points. We appreciate that you have come out and to this community to represent us. I ask that you represent all of us. An argument we heard last time was that it's not that big of a deal. It doesn't affect that many people in Sierra Madre. How many people are complaining? How many people can you bring to the meetings? I'm telling you that I'm able to come here. I have the means to come here. I represent those that can't. I'm a pediatrician. I represent the babies. I am a daughter of a mother with COPD who's on oxygen. I represent her. I represent the nurses with their kids that are next door to houses that don't, in the apartments, that have smoke that's drifting. I'm asking for vision. I'm asking for you, the existing members and the new ones, be visionary, be proactive. Don't let us be the last city that doesn't control secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. Why? You'll become a magnet. We'll be the last wonderful, beautiful place to live where there are apartments where we still allow smoking, or don't try to control it a little bit for the residents. So I ask you to please consider that. Finally, I would ask another thing. We're not asking a big ask. We're asking for an intelligent, creative discussion of this issue, and we may be asking also for incremental changes and, and reasonable enforcement. Okay? We're not asking the police officers to knock on doors. I'm not asking for neighbors to get into fights with each other. I'm asking us all to be what we are, neighbors of each other, and community members. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro temp and City Council members. My name is Maria. I am a Sierra Madre resident and property manager of the Wisteria Apartments located at 420 West Sierra Madre Boulevard. I am also a member of CARE Coalition and their mission to create a smoke-free, clean-air resident environment areas for Sierra Madre. I'm here tonight because I am interested in the City Council bringing back the discussion item from the tabled agenda on February 25th, 2014, regarding moving forward with a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance. As a resident and property manager of a smoke-free apartment building, I am very supportive of the City Council adopting a citywide policy to reduce smoking in apartments and condos to protect the health of residents. Our building specifically has been smoke-free for four years. Although it has been a great amenity to our tenants, it has also been taxing on me as a manager to enforce the policy. At times, some people continue to smoke in their units and on their patios. Thus, I feel that a citywide ordinance will give our policy more teeth, and people will be more inclined to comply. If I can reference the city code with only, it will only help to enforce a non-smoking policy. Also, if there is a citywide smoke-free policy for apartments and condos, it will level the playing field and allow residents an equal opportunity to live in a healthy and smoke-free environment. I was surprised to find that our beautiful city, Sierra Madre, does not already have this policy intact, when many surrounding cities do, for example, South Pasadena, Pasadena, Glendale, and Burbank. As an advocate for people who have compromised respiratory or other health conditions, like children and seniors, this citywide smoke-free ordinance would be a great service to everyone at large. I look forward to the item returning to the City Council agenda very soon. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Harabedian, our Mr. of last name.
Sorry, can you spell your last name really quickly for us?
Sure.
Yeah.
Mullen, M-U-L-L-E-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening.
Hello.
Renee Casuta, 297 West Carter. And I'm speaking about an, an idea that I mentioned six weeks ago in a City Council meeting, which is to consolidate our city elections into either the California primary or the November election each even-numbered year. And I just wondered whether this has, you know, anything has happened, any research, any, or when will it become an agenda item? I just wonder what the fate of that idea is so far. Can I ask you, do you have any?
Yeah, I mean, I can say that there's been nothing done on our end so far. And, you know, I will agendize, this is something I've been interested in doing, so I will agendize this for a discussion.
Right.
And then we can talk about it. But I appreciate you coming up again.
Yeah.
To remind us.
Well, I think it would both get better voter turnout and save money, I imagine.
Yeah.
So, anyway, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I would like her to spell her last name.
Casuta, is it K-S, K-A-S-U?
No, C-O-S-S-U-T-T-A.
I was way off.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barry Gold. I live at 441 Ramona Avenue. On the copy of the City Council agenda for this evening, which I got off the city's internet site, I see that number eight deals with the building of moratorium. That item might be the most important, not only the most important item of tonight on your agenda, but the most important item that's ever been on an agenda as long as any of you have been on the City Council. And it should not be number eight. It should be number two. Get your consents out of the way, and then let the people have their discussion on this moratorium. Don't make them wait two, two and a half hours till you get to this and get tired and bored to tackle this item. It's just too important. I believe you all have the right to change the sequence, and I'm asking you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. We actually did change the sequence, so the discussion on the moratorium will come right after the public hearings. And the public hearings have to go first as a matter of law. So, we, we couldn't do public hearings after a non-public...
So, we couldn't do public hearings after a non-public hearing, but I appreciate your comments. We pushed it up to the front so that you guys don't have to sit here and listen to us talk about other things. So, thank you very much.
Even though we are really entertaining.
Yeah, exactly.
That's much appreciated, because I think everybody here in the, and too bad the camera doesn't pan out to show that the house is full tonight.
You'll be here anyway, though.
But I'll be, I'm always usually here. But thank you for changing the agenda, because you do have that power. Anyway, I'm here to thank you, the fire department. I stopped in the park Friday night for the movie night. Some friends called and said, "Come on down." God, it was so wonderful. The park was full, families and children, and I saw, talk about doing business downtown. They all came with pizza, Subway sandwiches. I was hoping they'd extend over to Bean Town, but I think if that's possible, to do a movie every single Friday, I know we have concerts in the park, and I apologize because I haven't looked at the Wisteria Vine to see if that's what we're doing, but it was just wonderful. And when the movie was over, everybody applauded. Everyone left within fifteen minutes, and not a bit of trash was left. So the kids had a wonderful time, and the fire department bought and handed out the churro donuts from Tacos Tacos. So I really, I applaud, you know, the sponsorship of movies on Friday nights in the town. Thanks.
Thank you.
How are you doing? My name's Kevin Paschal. I'm at 555 West Highland Avenue. A member of the planning commission, have been for about the past five-and-a-half years. I was going to come up here tonight and say that, I know that in the planning commission, when we do have a full house and they're all there for one agenda item, we certainly move the agenda around. Okay? So I certainly think it'd probably be statesman-like of our council to do that at this time. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Arndt, 90th South Oak Avenue, Sierra Madre. I'd like to request that the city consider putting in...
Tom, can you come closer to the mic? Sorry.
I'd like to request that the city consider putting in a pedestrian-operated stop sign at the post office. The number of times anyone in that post office has been hit, I mean, even the sign you guys have put up in that crosswalk has been run down.
Mm-hmm.
There needs to be something done there. I know a couple of years ago, you had patrol officers on motorcycles and so forth picking off people who weren't stopping, but someone's going to get hit. So I'd like to recommend that you put up a pedestrian-operated stop signal.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Arndt.
Fay Angus on Cannon Avenue. I hope you all realize, in response to Councilmember Denise Delmar's comments on July the 4th and the Declaration of Independence, that my accent is early American. It's very early American. Why don't the English teach their children how to speak, right? I do want to, I do want to thank the council for moving item number eight. For those of you at home who don't have agenda in front of you, that is a very critical need for discussion on the need for a building moratorium until our water crisis here in Sierra Madre is solved. But thank you for moving that up to number four. And I think for those of the city manager, council members involved in preparing agendas, it would be advantageous on items especially concerning building development, water, et cetera, the mansionization potential of places like the Mater Dolorosa, or Carter, or Stonehouse. Excuse me. That those critical items be fairly well up in the agenda, because it's difficult for members to come here in order to speak to those items and have to sit for maybe a couple of hours listening to many, many other items. So thank you for having that sensitivity, and I hope in planning, the prioritization of items on the agenda, you will follow through with that sensitivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
Carol Parker, Mariposa. I know everybody's ready and anxious to get on with the agenda, and thank you again, Mayor Harbidian. Something did come up when the gentleman got up about the post office. I live off of Lima and Mariposa, and there is a home for the blind on Lima, and I'd like to bring this to the attention of everyone in Sierra Madre, and especially the City Council and the police. I know they're doing their job, but twice in the last year, when I've either come across Sierra Madre Boulevard going west or north on Lima, one of the lovely residents who lives in the home for the blind on Lima, I don't know how many people know that, seems to lose their way, and it's either with morning traffic on my way to work or in the afternoon, and people just speed on, and I don't know how many people know or are aware of this home or can recognize somebody with a white cane. So I've stopped twice because they're kind of almost in the middle of the street, but they're going towards the center, and gotten out of my car, it's Sierra Madre, it's a tiny town, this isn't downtown LA, and guided them across the street. People honk at me, they pass me by, they flip me off. Is there any way, which is unbelievable, but we can believe that, is there any way that we could get one of those little chip-chip-chip-chip sounds or something, something like that? I've seen that in other cities, to guide them with sound or to let, I don't really want a red flashing light, because I know that kind of ruins the charm of the city, but something to help them and something to let people know, or crosswalk for the, I don't know. Do you, do you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Because I think that's really important at that corner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was a corner of, what was that corner of Mariposa and Lima? Oh, just right here?
Sierra Madre Boulevard and Lima.
In Lima. Okay.
They can make it the rest of the way, but there's too much traffic there. I also think the curb is really high and they have a hard time. You might want to...
Can we get Bank of America to pay for that? Would they, since they're right there on that corner?
No, it's the, it's right here for the architect.
Right, right, right. Catty corner. Yeah, okay. Thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor, in case I forget, can we just make sure that we agendize CARE for future meetings?
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, remind, at the end of the meeting, agendize CARE and the election issue as well.
Okay, I'll put it down here on my list.
Yep. Okay. Onto the consent calendar.
I'm sorry, I'm writing down...
No.
...for putting election. Mayor Harbidian in CARE is Councilmember Delmar. Okay. I will speak very loudly. On the consent calendar this evening, at item 1A is adoption of Resolution 1457 approving our demands. At 1B is adopting the July 1, 2013 Actuarial Report completed by Bickmore for pre-funding the other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB, for Sierra Madre and amortizing the city's unfunded actual accrued liability over the next five years. The recommendation is that the, an amount not to exceed $300,000 be paid on that outstanding liability. At 1E is consideration of Resolution 1453, adopting the committed fund balances for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. At 1D is consideration of Resolution 1451 approving the city's acceptance of federal aid reimbursement for repair expenses incurred during the 2011 windstorm, and in agreement with the California State Transportation Agency, the city would receive approximately $60,000 back through that grant. At 1E is consideration of a proposed lease agreement with Verizon Wireless for the installation and operation of a cellular communications facility at the Sierra Madre Spreading Basin Facility, 621 East Sierra Madre Boulevard, and the recommendation is to authorize the mayor to execute that agreement. At 1F is authorization of an agreement to negotiate exclusively with Heritage Housing Partners regarding 186 West Highland, and the recommendation is to authorize the city manager slash executive director to sign that agreement. At 1G is consideration of Resolution 1456, designating a voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and that voting delegate and alternate would be Mayor Harbidian and Councilmember Rachelle Arizmendi. That concludes my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on any of these items?
Do you have a question on the actuarial report?
Item 1B.
Yeah. Can everybody hear me?
No.
Just continue to speak loudly.
Okay, is that better?
No.
Okay. Okay, could you explain a little bit on the actuarial? Your recommendation is to, is to put away how much extra towards the OPEB obligation? What was the recommendation?
It's an amount not to exceed $300,000, and there is $100,000 already included in the city's budget.
Okay, so that, that is coming out of our surplus, or where was, where is the money coming from?
It would come out of general fund reserves.
General fund reserves, okay. So we're still above our required amount of...
Yes, we are. We're still above the 50%.
Okay, so this puts us in a better position going forward, that we basically are pre-funding the OPEB obligation to a greater degree than we were before. That's the purpose of this?
We would be totally funding today's actuarial, actuarial amount. That amount could change two years from now.
Correct, so after you pay this, then we're all caught up, and it's just a matter of pay-as-you-go. We've got this reserve set aside in the trust fund, and eventually, we would start drawing down on that reserve and reduce our pay-as-you-go going forward?
That's, that's correct.
Do we have any projection as to when we would achieve the benefits of that and stop paying?
Director Schneider can respond to that one.
That's, that's not bad. That is quite hot.
Two speakers next to each other. Let's just extend, not to like that.
The question, good evening, Council. The question was whether or not we have, you know, at what point will begin paying, with being able to withdraw?
From the trust fund. It's too soon to tell, because we've just now corrected the unfunded liability. Right now, our norm cost, normal cost is still above our pay-as-you-go, so it could leave us with a small imbalance at the end. We're assuming interest will take care of most of that assumption. So I would, and it also depends on benefits, so at least not for the next two years will we plan on withdrawing anything from the trust fund. When we get our next report, we have to do this every two years, we'll be able to give you a better evaluation, but it's, we can't tell you today. That, all we could tell you is during the next two years, there's no plans to do that.
So the good news, then, at least we have no more unfunded liability for retiree health benefits.
And it frees up $100,000 out of the future budget years. We had five years left on our amortization schedule. This is paying it off so that we actually paid off the whole unfunded liability in five years.
Yeah, okay. Good deal. I'm all for it.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Okay, on item 1D, the $60,000 that we'll be receiving, what are we going to spend that money on?
Normally, that would just go into the general fund, and it hasn't been set aside or designated for anything other than an incoming revenue to the general fund.
Okay, the, you know, just reading the covenant, am I reading this right? It does say that you've got to keep track of it and report. Do we have to do that, or?
We have already submitted the documents regarding what made us eligible to receive the money.
Okay, so this is just reimbursement for money already spent?
Correct.
Okay.
This is from cleaning up during the windstorm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other questions on any other consent items?
None for me.
None? Entertain a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Always in favor?
All right.
All right, that's unanimous. Actually, I am so sorry. I didn't open up for, for questions from the audience on the consent calendar. Are there any? We usually don't get any, but, okay, well, then, we, it's approved. We can move on to number two. Item number two, a public hearing on our biannual budget consideration. 2013...
The fee schedule. We do have Director Schneider, I'm trying to see where she is. She's hiding.
Good evening, Council. This will be brief. Every year, we need to re-adopt our biannual budget fee schedules. We need to adopt them each June to be effective for July 1st. Per your policy, we have applied the Los Angeles County Consumer Price Index. This year will be 1.4. We do round up to the nearest dollars. Some fees, if they're too close to being pennies, we'll round them down, such as the library hasn't had any fee increases for three years and finally have gotten a full 1% because they're such small fees to begin with. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just a question. Have we, you know, we go through this every year. Since we did it last year, have there been any complaints that fees are out of line on any particular thing?
No, and we have adopted a policy and procedure in our department to now do it per department, so that we will be bringing back, it's on our future agenda items in September, October, to be bringing back the library department. So we'll be doing a full, comprehensive evaluation of those fees comparisons to other cities, and then we'll be doing that on an annual basis for each department. So you'll, you'll adopt this comprehensive one with just the CPI, but we'll do a detailed look at each department so that you can have these questions answered. The last one we did was development services. We did that one last year, and this year, we plan for the library.
Okay, we've got some changes, though. I see under landscape and tree fees, we are now proposing fees where we didn't have it before, tree commission review is $141. We never had that before. Is that true?
That, the ordinance wasn't in place when we adopted last year's fee, so the fee has been put in place based on the fee.
And based on your new fee ordinance.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, based on your new tree ordinance.
I forgot that we did that.
There's a new tree ordinance.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Please, I don't think your mic's on.
That was costed out, right?
Correct. I'm sorry, if I, if I costed out, you mean, the analysis was done regarding, it's a, it's a computer program that puts in the staff time, the materials, et cetera, to do each of these things, and it generates a fee?
Right. I was on the council when you guys approved that. What do you, what are we actually reviewing? What is, what are we charging $141 for?
Which fee are you talking about, Councilmember?
The tree commission review.
It's the staff hours to, they assume a certain number of hours, they average out, a weighted average for the year of how much each tree review takes, and they multiply, as you see at the bottom of the public works in every single department, there's an hourly rate that's loaded with not just salaries and benefits, but also all cost allocations that are applicable to the department, and that hourly rate is multiplied by the number of hours. Do you hear hours? Bruce?
What's triggering a review?
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering what, what, whomever's getting for their money here. A lot of money to look, look at a tree, right?
And, no, it actually goes with the engineering, so when someone's doing development, it determines whether or not the trees are protected, whether or not they should remain on the property, if they're going to be moved, where can they be moved to. There's a whole ordinance that's actually coming back on a future staff report to talk about how we record that revenue. But the public works department actually tells you what the weighted number of hours are. He's on his way down.
I guess he's, he's going to answer that.
Did you, did you get that out? Did you have additional questions, Karen?
No.
Okay, we're good.
I think we're good on that.
We're good on that one.
Councilmember Delmar, any questions?
No questions for me.
No questions for me. So we'll open up to public comment. A race to the mic.
Hi, Barbara Lee Klein. Go ahead and stop me if this is the wrong place to bring it up, but does this fee schedule, does that also include things such as the trail race that we just had? Because if it does, then, I just heard that Karen say that we charge hourly, the city employees charge hourly, rather than a one-time charge. And so wouldn't you have to submit, then, what you expect to use your time for when you're doing a volunteer agenda such as that?
I did read in our local Tatler blog, spot, Tatler, that the fees overextended this year, I think we were in the red, over $1,000, for a simple couple of hours of a trail race, which I know used to be strictly just run by volunteers. So I just, I'm not sure where the fee schedule comes in then, that the city staff would charge, that we would run in the red. And I think that's something that could be easily adjusted and fixed, and so we don't have to have that issue come up again. Not just with the trail race, but other volunteer areas of the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara Lee.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. Um, I'm Ben Wong with Southern California Edison, and I wanna bring up a couple things, and thank you, Mayor Portem Kiposha, for, uh, the comments on the tree review, but I, I'll, I'll come back to that one. Uh, I apologize that our staff has not had an opportunity, given the limited amount of time of the posting of the agenda, to fully review the fee schedule. I don't imagine that we have any issues, we certainly don't have an issue with a CPI increase, but to the extent that there may be some fees in here that we haven't discovered that may have an impact on, um, our company, we'd like the ability to at least come back to staff and talk to them about that. Uh, but I do wanna point out, relative to the tree fee, you will recall, those of you that were on this council, at the time when the city adopted the protected tree ordinance, I came and expressed some concerns about the conflict between that ordinance, the potential conflict between that ordinance, and the California Public Utilities Commission requirement for Edison to maintain clearance around trees for electrical safety reasons. Uh, I was assured at that time that the tree ordinance would not impact that, uh, that that CPUC-regulated activity would continue. But I was also told that, uh, we would, that the, the, the permit for, uh, doing that would be a no-fee permit. That was true last year's fee schedule, but you now have a $35 administrative tree review. I don't know if that would apply to Edison, uh, for that CPUC-regulated activity or not, so I'd like a clarification. Uh, because if it were regulated, uh, and if that $35 applied per tree, that would be a pretty significant fee that we would be pretty objective to, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Any other questions? Bring it back for discussion. Any comments?
Just like, uh, answer to that question, I mean, the administrative tree review is for protected trees, to evaluate protect, protected trees, so that's.
And related to development.
As it relates to, so even though parkway trees are protected trees per se, that when Edison comes to do the trimming, they are not charged an administrative tree?
I am looking for Director Inman, 'cause he actually administers this, this process, so I think it's best to hear from him.
As prior, as we arranged already with Edison, as, as we noted to them, and as, um, Mr. Wong indicated, we are not charging them a fee for that, for that permit.
Right, and the other constraint that we put on them was, was a notification, right? We wanted to be notified when they came into town. To your experience, are we experiencing any difficulties there in coordinating tree trimming activities?
What we get from Edison at this point is an annual notification, which is rather difficult to, to follow up on. They, they give us a list of what they're gonna trim when, and.
Yeah.
That's about it annually.
Okay.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion on the fee schedule.
I move that we adopt, uh, what resolution is it?
1450.
1450?
And we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. On to item number three.
We have Director Schneider again.
The Snyder Show.
It's end of the year.
And this staff report is for the GAN limit. Again, this is a public hearing, an annual thing. GAN limit went into effect shortly after Prop 13, sets the limitation on our revenue that we can collect as far as taxes, and the city once again is far, um, below that set limit. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff? We'll open up to public comment. And seeing none, we'll bring it back, any discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, accept the GAN limit?
Resolution number 14.
I move whatever it is.
Approve resolution.
Approve resolution number 14 dash 044.
Thank you. One second then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, that is unanimous. On to item number four. Mr. Castro. Adoption of the local development report, LDR, and self-certification of the city's conformance with the congestion management program.
Good evening, Mary Harabedian, members of the council. This is, this too is an item that comes to you, uh, every year, once a year. Uh, state law requires that a congestion management plan, a CMP, be developed, adopted, and updated for every city within Los Angeles County and through all counties throughout, uh, the state. The, um, CMP, uh, links transportation, land use, and air quality decisions. The CMP addresses the impact of local growth on the regional transportation system. Uh, each city, again, with, within the county, must produce a local development report and submit it to the LA County Metropolitan Transit Authority, which verifies compliance with the current CMP. And that reporting period is between June 1st, 2013, through May 31st, 2014. Uh, using this local development report, uh, basically self-certifies that we're in conformance with the CMP. Uh, within this reporting period, uh, we've had, um, five demolitions of single-family homes and new construction of seven single-family residences, and that's reflected in the attached local development report. And again, this gets transferred to, to MTA. Uh, with that, uh, it, staff recommends that the city council conduct this public hearing and, um, adopts Resolution 1441.
Thank you, Director Castro, any questions?
Just one quick question, so basically what we're doing is certifying that we've had two net new homes, I mean, five demolitions, seven, two net new, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Castro. We'll open up the public hearing for public comment. And seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any discussion?
No.
I think we know how this works by now, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 14 dash 41, finding that the city of Sierra Madre is in conformance with the CMP and adopt the 2014 CMP LDR.
I'll second it, how about that?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. On to the building moratorium, item number eight that has been moved up.
At a previous council meeting, uh, Councilmember Damar did request that staff return with a report regarding a building moratorium or other alternatives in response to the, um, local drought, and as we're all aware, um, the statewide drought. The staff report provides, um, a bit of history of what's gotten us to this point. Um, as everyone is aware, um, we have not had much rain, we're at historic lows in rain. Um, in 1213, it was 9.72 inches. Uh, this last year, I believe we barely, barely made it over the nine-inch mark. Um, the Raymond Basin Board, as we're all aware, the, has imposed what's called a 500-foot rule on us because the, uh, aquifer underneath us referred to as the Raymond Basin, East Raymond Basin, got to historic low levels, so they've reduced pumping, um, out of that aquifer. And, uh, it got to such a point where the city had to turn off its wells and start taking imported, uh, MWD water. There are essentially three options, uh, for a moratorium that are, uh, available to the city council. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the city attorney to explain those three options.
Um, thank you, uh, city manager. Yes, based on the current conditions, the current drought conditions, the condition in the East Raymond Basin, which, um, uh, has been estimated to take anywhere between three to five years, no one's really sure, for the basin to recover, given the, um, the drought conditions, and in the meantime, that being that Sierra Madre is dependent on imported water, those types of facts, uh, can support findings that the public health, safety, and welfare of the city may consider in, in the imposition of a moratorium. There are two different types of moratoriums that the city has the, uh, the authority to impose. The more, one that's most common, um, for municipalities is government code 65858, the so-called building moratorium. The purpose of implementing a building moratorium, they are very temporary in nature, and the purpose of doing one, presuming that you can make the appropriate findings, is to preserve the status quo with develop. Until such time. Thank you. Uh, so you preserve the status quo until the city can study and develop and implement new regulations that are intended to actually address the condition. Land use moratoriums are limited in time to no. For the time that it takes to implement the land use regulations that are intended to help alleviate that temporary condition. So that's, that's what a land use moratorium does. Um, they are, a, a land use moratorium starts with an initial 45-day period. It takes a four-fifths vote to implement it. Uh, within the first 45 days, staff would come back to the council with a report on, um, what needed to be done, what, uh, regarding the development code. Whether to. Or the purpose. Um, that's the first type. And it, the regulations that are intended to correct the problem, you don't get to come back and do the same moratorium again, because you've corrected the problem. Now, there's a second type of moratorium that you don't see cities often do, and that's probably because they have the power to do the land use moratorium. The second kind of moratorium, which this city has the authority to do, because it is a public water supply distributor, the city actually, um, distributes water to its community. The city then could also adopt a water hookup moratorium under the water code. A water hookup moratorium, in order to do, take it as, do it as an urgency measure, should also be done by a four-fifths vote. And the water moratorium remains in place, that is, a moratorium on new water hookups would remain in place until the conditions, um, regarding the drought and the, uh, situation in the East Raymond Basin have, uh, improved significantly for the council as the, uh, you know, the directors of the water department to then lift the moratorium. Those are the, the two basic kinds of moratoriums. The council could consider, uh, one or the other, or both, um, as well as other, uh, potential regulatory, um, uh, changes, including taking a look at the water conservation ordinance.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney, Madam City Manager, anything, anything else? Any questions, council, for the city manager or the city attorney?
Um, I have one. You, it would take, um, how long would it take to put a water moratorium in place?
To put a water moratorium in place, we would need to notice in a, one time in, uh, the newspaper of general circulation, the. The council would take the action. Uh, then the council could take the action at that same meeting, and if you used a four-fifths vote, it would be effective immediately and remain in place uh, as long as the conditions that justified it remained, or otherwise until the council determined to lift it.
Thank you.
I have a question too. Madam City Attorney?
It's okay. I'm sorry, can we take a 10-minute break? We are having some sound difficulty, we think we can fix it.
Okay.
Just leaving you on the edge of your seat.
We can open the door to let some clear. We can open the door to let some clear air go through. You can actually hear better if you sit over that. No one ever lets us sit in front of what we have. Yeah.
Okay, and we're back. So, thank you. For your patience, everyone, I think we have the microphone situation. But you can't hear because you're talking. And I'm sorry, you know, when you're talking and I'm talking.
I can hear.
Good. Okay. So the microphones seem to be overheating at times. We've tried to kick up the AC a little bit, open the door. I think we've somewhat solved it temporarily, so we'll go back at it. And Councilmember Goss?
Now, I gotta try to remember my question. In going to, if we were to consider Phase Three of our water conservation ordinance, doesn't that accomplish a similar objective in terms of stopping any new water hookups that might be onerous to the system?
Under the water conservation ordinance, it is correct that the council also has the discretion to prohibit new water hookups once you've gone to a Phase Three, which is a thirty percent conservation.
Right. Thank you.
I think it might be helpful, too, if we explain a little bit what's changed since we looked at this ninety days ago, or whenever that was. And I do want to point out, Madam City Manager, in your report, it says that the rainfall for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen was only five point nine inches, so less than the bad year we had before. So can we, can we talk a little bit, I mean, we talked before, too, about what our reserve situation is with the four cities' water district. Can you elaborate on that, or have Director Inman talk about what the prospects are going forward, as far as what we have available to us and what might cause that to go away?
Director Inman?
Is he still working? Oh, there he is.
He's here.
So the question is, if I'd be a little bit more direct, what reserves do we have with the four cities' water district? And just again, what are the conditions under which we get to use the Grandview connection? And if you can kind of explain that a little bit, so we can just give the public a sense of the risk that we're facing with our current water situation?
Sure. I've been advised by the General Manager of the four cities' district that as long as Metropolitan has water, we will have water, through the agreement that those two state water contractors have worked out. And Metropolitan has publicly stated in a number of venues that they have two-years supply. That having been said, though, we don't necessarily have any particular rights to Metropolitan's water, and that two-year supply they've been talking about could last two years, could last less, could last longer, depending on overall use in the area, and whether they get any additional water in the next rainy season to backfill that. So that water supply is, to a certain degree, tenuous. And as we are not a Metropolitan member, we would be the first ones to be shut off if things became difficult for Metropolitan.
So why would Metropolitan give us water if our water district is completely out of water?
This is, it's a function of the agreement between the two agencies. I've been assured that we will continue to get water as long as it's available through Met.
Yeah.
I've gotten that assurance from the General Manager.
Okay. But again, your point, though, is that if Metropolitan Water District customers are, if their supplies are curtailed, then we are at risk?
That is, that is correct. Metropolitan is going to take care of their own customers before they're going to take care of us.
Yeah. How much water does our four cities' water district have in reserves that we have, you know, we're a customer or a member of them, and we have rights to that water?
I don't know what their specific reserves are right now, because those vary from week to week as they're making transactions with the other three cities. The water that we have recently purchased from them will get us through March of 2015, and at that point, we'll be looking at having to purchase more at our present consumption rate.
But they get their water from the state water project, which has been curtailed less than five percent of what was requested.
Right.
And that's dependent on the Bay Area problem and the Delta smelt and all that stuff?
It depends on, yeah, the Bay Area issues. Right now, that state water project water is coming from the Colorado River.
The state water?
The board agency, yeah. That water that we're getting now is coming from the Colorado River.
It's Colorado River water, yeah, yeah, right. Okay.
Director Inman, do we have it in writing, the guarantee that we will continue to get that water?
We have, all we have is a copy of that agreement.
Okay.
Excuse me. Need for the question for you?
Director Inman, can you, so you're saying that we have a year till this time next spring, or not quite till this time next spring, but beyond that, it's up in the air? Or would a reasonable person conclude that we have more than a year of water available to us?
I think it's reasonable to conclude that we have more than a year, but I wouldn't look at that long-term unless we get to a year from now and there's been ample amount of rain, then I think we can look at that supply lasting longer. But again, it's all going to depend on the weather, essentially, and whether we get the rainfall, we need to start replenishing supplies, and whether we get the snowfall up north.
Are we completely dependent on Metropolitan water right now?
At this point, we could theoretically shut off the Metropolitan connection, turn on our wells, and for a limited time, maybe a couple of months, we could pump from the wells, and then we would be back to where we started back in October, and then we'd have to go back. And each time we switch back from one water source to another, we're going to shock the distribution system and start the water discoloration issue all over again, and we don't want to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Inman, who is up here? I can ask other questions of staff, but...
One follow-up question. So, in your professional opinion, how long will it take us to get, let's, and use whatever figure, what average, whatever average you would use, how many years will it take us to get to a point where we can use, we can be wholly reliant on the East Raymond Basin?
To be wholly reliant on the East Raymond Basin, I can't say for sure that we will ever get to that point. That would be our goal, but at the present time, we're looking at at least twenty-seven months of recovery for the basin at the present rate of consumption and at the rate of recharge that is happening naturally, even without the rainfall. But that gets us to the 500-foot level. We still have to go beyond that 500 feet to start pumping our full adjudication, and once we, again, start pumping that full adjudication, then the levels are going to start going down. The Water Master Board has not yet determined when we can actually rescind the 500-foot rule. So it's going to take us twenty-seven months to get to 500 feet, more months to get beyond that. I would say we're probably three years at least, and at the outside, probably five.
And that 500-foot rule came into play because?
It came into play because the water levels in the eastern unit of the Raymond Basin reached an elevation, actually went below an elevation of 500 feet above mean sea level. And according to the adjudication that we operate under, when that level, when the levels drop below 500 feet, we have to reduce our consumption.
And when did that go into effect?
That went into effect in January.
In January, okay.
So that's one of the contributing factors, one of the things that's changed since we talked about this before.
Okay, thank you.
Director Inman, I was switching gears slightly here a bit. We didn't have a presentation before the meeting on our conservation levels and our water usage. Probably would have been a good time to do it, but where are we in terms of water usage, our conservation?
As of today, this month in July, we're at about five percent.
Five percent, and we're only conserving five percent over last year's?
Over last year, correct.
And that's even with the 20 percent mandatory conservation?
That is correct.
And in your mind, to me, the problem really is one of, you know, supply. Obviously, we don't have accessible water supplies beyond the MWD connection, beyond our four cities, and beyond our own basins. Would, obviously, would increased conservation help in making whatever supplies that we have last a little bit longer? I mean, is this, is this something, and I'm trying to set up something, it seems like this is also an issue of current usage of members, current residents, it's a matter of we're probably using too much water right now.
We need to continue to reuse our water, or reduce our water usage, yes. That's important. It's critical that we do that. We're paying our district rate times two for every amount of, every acre foot of water we get. It's, therefore, it's expensive water, and as we've already noted, it is not necessarily an unlimited supply. So we need to make that last as long as we can.
Was there a correlation in the numbers? And there probably was, but when we lifted the penalties on the 20 percent conservation rate, was there a direct hockey, hockey stick effect there? Did usage just go right up after that?
Usage didn't really accelerate at that point. It did, the usage did increase, but it wasn't the hockey stick, as you indicated.
Slowly rose.
The difference in the numbers at that point back in November was more related to the decreased usage in November of 2013. So while we reported that usage, that we weren't conserving as much back in November after, after the penalties were set aside, part of that was due to the fact that November 2013 was a low-use month.
I guess my final question is, to the extent that we do have a water, we obviously have an issue with water supply. To the extent that you want to call it an emergency, is there, in your opinion, is this a Sierra Madre-specific emergency, or is this, is this a regional or statewide issue that, you know, all of our neighbors are dealing with and the whole state is dealing with?
Certainly, the whole state is dealing with this. Our neighbors are dealing with this. Azusa today went to Phase Three water conservation. Driving to work this morning, I saw on the side of a foothill transit bus, the water conservation plan that's being publicized where watering days, irrigation days are being limited in some cities. It is a state problem, it's a regional problem, and for Sierra Madre, it's particularly acute because of our limited sources of water supply. Thank you.
Another follow-up question. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but meteorological authorities say that we may be looking at an El Nino this year, and I know that means different things at different times, under different conditions. Is that something that we've considered, what that might mean? And let's say we get a good El Nino, what does it mean?
You know, I really, I'm sorry, I can't really answer that. I'm not a meteorologist.
If we have an above-average rainfall?
If we get above-average rain, that will be helpful. If we get torrential rainfalls like we did in 2005, '06, where we got sixty inches of rain, that does not necessarily help us because we get that rain all at once, we can't, we can't possibly capture it all and put it in the ground. The best thing for Sierra Madre and for this region is a level amount of rain over a long period of time. Thank you.
We may have more questions later, but thank you. Any other questions for staff, City Manager, City Attorney?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay. We will open this up for public comment, questions? It's going to be another race to the mic.
I might have missed, my first question really is, was it possible for Rochelle to have a phone connection so she could have been part of this meeting?
I think she's at sea, actually, so, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, anyway, sorry that there's not an extra vote up there. From what I'm hearing, from what it sounds like, in my opinion, I would like to see the building moratorium. Was that ordinance 65858, I believe, is what was, yeah. And since I've heard that we've reached Phase Three, which is state, regional, and citywide, that we've met the criteria. And then a couple of good questions of, yeah, El Nino probably wouldn't make a difference unless we have it for the next three to five years to re-aquify the selling basins that are really more than dust at this point, let alone the Edison fee for pumping that we're going to be charged, absorbent amount of money to just get the pumping fees going when we do get the water back online? So even with the Metropolitan hookup, which is possible, some people might say we don't need a building moratorium because we do have the hookups on Carter, we just don't have the water flowing through there yet. If that's the case, then why are we paying the extra money for the increase in water fees? So it's kind of a mixed bag that we're getting here from the city. But for me, I'm hoping that we will go ahead and go with a building moratorium. Really, it's hypocrisy that we're asked to go ahead and conserve water and then turn around and have large building being done here in town. So, that's my input. Now, I know you're timing me, I have a minute and fourteen. So that was mine. I was also asked to read from another citizen here in Sierra Madre, their input, so I'll wait for you to start the clock again.
I'm not going to cut you off. Go ahead.
This is from Chris Lecure on 348 Camilo Street in Sierra Madre. My dear Honorable Mayor and members of Sierra Madre City Council, I have been a resident of Sierra Madre for, and I'll submit this to Nancy Scholinger-Burgerly, I have been a resident of Sierra Madre for twenty-four years, and my husband has lived here for thirty-five. We own a home on Camilo Street, and we both consider it a luxury to live in a place that has, it's about a two-and-a-half page, and I'm not going to summarize because it's not my letter. A luxury to live in a place that has somehow managed to maintain a small-town charm for so many years, while neighboring cities were selling out to developers and allowing them to change the integrity of their community. I wish I could be present to speak to you in person this evening, but due to previous commitments, I could not. It is my understanding that as part of tonight's agenda, there will be an open forum allowing residents to address their concerns regarding development, or more specifically, overdevelopment and exploitation of what has been left of our natural areas on our hillsides, and is what is left of the appealing charm and residential lots that still remain in our neighborhoods. I do realize that our home and landowner possesses the right to sell their properties at will, and I understand that those who buy properties possess the right to demolish buildings and new structures, as allowed by law. However, unfortunately, not everyone's idea of appropriate land use or architectural appeal works well with this community. I remember when this used to be a town where any buyer or developer would hesitate to invest in property here for the purpose of development and instant profit, because they knew it would be tough task to get their plans and designs approved. They knew they'd have to come up with something that fit in to the existing community and culture of our town. Apparently, a lot has changed over the past few years, perhaps beginning with the sale and exploitation of the property at one Carter. My question about this has always been, how could we have allowed that developer, that one developer, to come into this town, buy a gorgeous piece of natural space property that had been habitat to indigenous wild animals, and then let it be destroyed by bulldozers, trucks hauling out our local dirt and rocks that belong there? Many locals who understand how precious and important the healthy balance of cohabitation is with nature is with nature tried their best to fight that development. But the only answer to that question I have been able to come up with is money talks, nature and culture walks. Greed is a very powerful force of human nature, and I believe that is exactly why this town that used to be so avid about maintaining its historic and natural charm sold out in that case. It seems to be continuing the trend by ignoring the importance of protecting and the existing culture, which developers come in on and rip our town apart. As long as they have the money, it seems that we can look the other way. We will quickly become just another city in Los Angeles unless we get back on track with saying no to overdevelopment. Again, no to overdevelopment and exploitation of the beautiful spaces that we still have left. I guess my two minutes are now probably up. I beg of you, my dear mayor and city council members, please do what you can to stop allowing this city to sell out. We don't need the money that bad, folks. What we need is to get back to the basics of why we even love living here. You can pave anything if you want it too bad enough. Tell the developers to go somewhere else and destroy the beauty there, why people don't care, or where people don't care. We Sierra Madreans are sick and tired of it. Thank you for listening."
Thank you, Barbara Lee and Mr. Lacure. Any other speakers? And I think there will probably be a lot, and I will give you more, more than three minutes if you need it. Just let me know at the beginning if you have a long comment, but we are asking folks to stay to three minutes. You're going to get, you're going to get cut in line here if you don't get, oh, he got you. Sorry, Mr. Gold. Do you want to wait up there? Yeah, you want to stand in line? There could, if you guys want to form a line, you can.
Hello. My name is Tim Thomas, and I live on Edgeview Drive. And I'm here to talk about the charm that we have here at Sierra Madre for raising families with kids, and the children here have an experience that, that we, I imagine that we who grew up in the San Gabriel Valley experienced, having open spaces and just beautiful places to see and places to explore. And we have that still here in Sierra Madre. I think it's very different. All the surrounding towns, they've all been built out and filled up, and the children of those towns don't have the same open-space experiences that we have still. And it's disconcerting to see that these three major developments are coming in to basically fill up the rest of Sierra Madre with no more open space, no more, no more nature-loving areas to be able to, to enjoy. And I'd like to see that the children of Sierra Madre experience the same wonderful love of nature and the outdoors and the same beauty that we who grew up in the San Gabriel Valley once had. I'm not the only one asking this. There were, there were six children here earlier, but they were getting a little stir-crazy, so they went home. And they also have to school tomorrow, summer school. And it was just kids around my block that the parents were like, please take them and speak for us. They couldn't speak because they couldn't, you know, it was a long wait for them to, to be in this meeting. But what they were asking was basically to not destroy the habitat of open space that we have, so that they can continue to enjoy the great, the great experiences many of us here had as children, being able to ride bikes and see open fields and open land area, and not to see this whole area just get paved over with home after home after home. The other issue that they brought up was also, they don't want to see the wildlife get damaged with, with the paving over of, of these areas. And the other issue that they mentioned was the fact that they're concerned about the water. I mean, they see the yellow water. They smell the sulfur, or whatever it may be, but there's some nasty smell in that water as well. It's not just a discoloration issue. I think it's a health issue. When the water can smell that bad, you know, I'm concerned, not just for myself, but for the children, and their bodies are little. And who knows what this, too many, too many homes in the area will do to the, to the, to the quality of our water. So thank you very much, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I am Barry Gold. I live at 441 Ramona Avenue. On our city's website, on the page titled "About Sierra Madre," in part is the following. "The city of Sierra Madre is a small, quaint, safe, and friendly town in the San Gabriel Valley region of Los Angeles County. Sierra Madre is one of the few cities in the region which has fully been able to retain its village quality despite pressures for growth. This is what we proudly boast about on our website, resisting the pressures to abandon our 107-year-old goal, goal of preserving our small-town atmosphere. This council is obviously having trouble resisting the pressures being put on it to approve several proposed inappropriate major housing projects. The justification that the revenue derived from these projects is needed is in no way justification for the irreversible unwanted changes that would take place in our community if these projects were allowed to continue. Because of our water problems, you now have a perfect out. It is, of course, ludicrous to allow additional homes to be built at a time when we do not have enough water for our current residents. No one could fault you for passing a two-year moratorium under the current circumstances. Call it a building moratorium, a water moratorium, it doesn't really matter. Before, two years from now, there will be another city council election. I know that there will be candidates who, if elected, will protect our community's traditions. These candidates will not want to prevent a person from building a home here. Once our water problem is solved, they will just want that home to conform architecturally and enhance our neighborhoods. If the candidates I refer to are elected by the people, then the people will have spoken loud and clear. After 107 years, you can wait less than two more and let the voters decide the fate of this city when they have the next city council election. This problem is too serious for just four or five of you to make the decision. In the meantime, pass a moratorium. And while a moratorium is being formulated, please do not sneak through a project or two before the moratorium can be put in place. And also, do not change our website tomorrow, taking out the park, where we show our pride in being able to resist the pressures for inappropriate growth. Finally, I truly hope that my concerns are unnecessary and that this council will do the right thing, which is keep Sierra Madre from being, from becoming something we will no longer recognize."
Thank you, Mr. Gold.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Randall.
Can you pull the mic a little bit closer to you?
Forward?
Yeah, I just, if you can speak into the mic a little bit more directly. You can, you can bend it if you need to.
My name is Victoria Randall. I live on 605 Edgeview Drive in Sierra Madre, and I lived there 44 years. When I arrived in that city, I have four children. I raised them there. They went to the local schools, Catholic schools. I support everything that was possible for the fathers, or however you call them. They retreat home, because when I bought that house, they told me that you have to support them because someday they might sell this property and they need money. So I asked, how could I support them? Well, at the end of June, they have a festival. So we are all these neighbors here helping them to earn money so they can make their living. For many years, I don't even remember if it was 10, 15, or 20 years, they had this kind of drive every end of June to have this festival for two days, Saturday and Sunday. They brought people from all over California with buses. I guess it was the Catholic, you know, people who support them, and they make a lot of money, and they were happy. The fathers, for many years, because I raised the four children, they would play back there. They'd fly their kites, they'd play. I have horses, I have my horses back there. Nobody ever stopped me to go there. Lately, what is happening, they post signs, we're not allowed to get out of that gate to go there. Why? I know it is their property, and like I said to anybody, he can't come to my property. The same thing they can tell, they can tell me too. But let's not forget, that's God's house. And when I go up there, I respect, and I bring children there to show them how beautiful the Easter holidays celebrate. Many of those fathers, the older ones, they thank me for doing that and tell the people how good is their faith. But lately, we are not allowed to get out there. Of course, I understand it's their property, but since when God's property is somebody's property, we have to have our children there to learn about that Christian life that everybody thinks is the greatest thing on earth. By doing these houses over there, the trick is to go back there. That's not right. You people over here, I'm sure, I know you for 44 years. I never raised my voice for what wrong they do, but now I will. I want you to all think before you give them a permit to build any houses back there. We want the open space. We love the deers. We love sometimes bears, too. We don't chase them away. They climb over and they eat my fruits. I'm not afraid. I only close my doors and let them. That's their, their house, too. I don't want to say it's mine. Only God knows what is ours. And if that property there belongs to God's house, we want to respect and have a faith before they turn us all off from what they try to do, give these people come and put big houses on. Thank you very much for listening, and I hope I don't have to see you again for the same problem."
Thank you. The feeling is mutual, I'm sure.
Good evening. Matthew Bryant, Edgeview Drive. Make no mistake, we have a water crisis. And I don't believe that the connection to the MWD is the solution. It provides inferior water that is more expensive, yellow, and perhaps unhealthy. Our family has a Culligan water filter next to a little faucet at our sink, and that's what we use for drinking water. My wife refuses to use that filtered water anymore, so she resorts to bottled water. So obviously, that water she doesn't see as fit to drink. Many times, we haven't been able to give our daughter a bath because the water is so discolored. When we are able to, it is only after we are forced to use about four times the amount of water to flush the pipes out, not exactly a way to conserve water. And my understanding is that the connection to the MWD was only supposed to be a temporary one until we get over the drought. My concern is that even if we do get over the drought, will we be allowed, will we have allowed so much development that now we have no choice but to maintain that connection to the MWD, drought or no drought? We know that outside developers don't care about these eventual problems for Sierra Madre. They want to maximize their profit. Then they leave Sierra Madre and they move on to the next project. The residents of Sierra Madre are left with the consequences. I happen to think that the sacred obligation of the city council, and our city staff for that matter, is to make decisions in the best interest of the existing residents of Sierra Madre. And I emphasize the word "existing," and not look out for the best interest of possible future residents, and certainly not the best interest of outside developers. With all that is going on right now, the water crisis, the updated general plan going through its process for approval, the discussion about the build-out numbers, with all that going on, I have to ask why we are suddenly going on a building spree with projects like the Kensington, One Carter, Stonehouse, and Mater Delarosa. I think it is irresponsible to go down a road that the vast majority of residents do not want. That road leads to chronic water shortages, traffic lights, parking meters, congestion, McMansions, and all the elements of what we see so clearly in adjacent cities like Arcadia and Pasadena. If we continue down that road, Sierra Madre becomes just another city indistinguishable from our neighbors. And I believe that affects all our property values. What keeps our property values high is the uniqueness of Sierra Madre. And so for these reasons, I support, now, I came here today supporting an immediate building moratorium, but after hearing the city attorney give her discussion, maybe a, a water meter moratorium is the way to go. I don't know. But I think we do need to catch our breath and decide the future of Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Mayor, council members, thank you for your attention. My name is Laura Thomas. I live on Edgeview Drive. I have a couple of comments that I'm going to add at the end of a letter. It's a short letter that was given to me to read on behalf of Lyndon McManus. So here is her letter. From Lyndon McManus and her husband Bill Bridges, have lived on Oak Crest in Sierra Madre since 2000. She writes, "I graduated from Alverno in 1971. We were evacuated in the fire of 2008. We've seen properties subdivided and developed, and other developments pushed through against the objections of a great many townspeople. And now, during the state of emergency drought, more massive development could happen. We own over one acre and are being punished for owning that much land by having to pay an extremely high cost of water usage with a four-tier system. Since 2000, we have halved our water consumption. We do not want to cut the usage further, as even our drought-tolerant plants will die, and we'd be left with either a high fire hazard of dead vegetation or nothing but dirt." The, the Passionists have mentioned that they've been planning on selling off this property for over seven years, and that they've been open and transparent in all of their decisions. But the first that we've heard of it was a mention in one of the town pamphlets earlier this year. We received no notifications. At no time during those six or seven years were we made aware that this retreat center had financial problems, nor that they were considering selling off part of the acreage. Any major development affects everyone in the town. Yet I don't recall any mass mailings describing the problems nor soliciting help or ideas. Perhaps if the community knew of this six or seven years ago, there could have been any number of possible solutions. A citywide tax could have been possible, and that $20 million could have been a reality. But now, with just a few months' notice, it's being aggressively sought by Mater Delarosa, their board, and their public relations firm. We may not be directly impacted by the proposed construction at Mater Delarosa, as the residents of Sennyside are, and Edgeview Drive, I will add, but we are impacted by the damage to the town. More water problems, the degradation of the infrastructure, the increased traffic, the irrevocable loss of open space. This is a beautiful small town that is being destroyed by overdevelopment. Please institute a building moratorium during this drought, and afterwards, if there isn't afterwards, institute and maintain a low-density plan with large lot sizes and small houses. Thank you." That's from Lyndon McManus and her husband Bill Bridges. I would like to add that there are two main issues that I see. We have a severe water shortage. That's very well-known. I personally desperately miss my well water. I've lived here for 10 years, and when I bathe my children, it's disgusting. The taste is horrible. There are significant health concerns. I, I've been made aware that I'll be fined if I wash my car in my driveway. So how is it possible that there's even a consideration for building developments of homes? Not only is there the significant water usage in building those homes, but then the, the water hookups, extreme amount of water. And I will get fined for washing my car in my driveway, really. There seems to be a significant disconnect. It's, it's very evident that there needs to be a two-year building moratorium and at least a five-year water moratorium so that we can at least figure out where to go from there. That's kind of obvious. So that, the other issue that's very significant is that there was a coalition that did bring other options for the Passionist Father Retreat Center. They, as, as far as I'm aware, they would like to sell that property to fund their retirement. They, as far as I'm aware, they would like to sell that property to fund the retirement of their priests. I can't blame them for that. They also want to fund their third-world missions. Again, we have no issues with that. The way they're going about it by selling the land for building homes is a very significant issue. We did propose to them that they could possibly allow us, the taxpayers and the voters, to possibly purchase that property. It would take a year to two to figure that out. They considered it and rejected it. So they're choosing development, but they do have other options. So I just put that out there for public record. Anyway, thank you very much for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Yes, a copy would be nice. Clem, really quickly, sorry, just to remind, appreciate all the comments. And a lot of the comments were focusing on specific development projects. And I just, as the mayor, I have to remind everyone, we're getting close to comments that, about items that are not really on this agenda item. Your free to talk about any, any sort of things that are related to this and obviously development is related to this. I would just be careful about specifically calling out certain projects because then arguably you aren't talking about the item that we're talking about now. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Clem Bartoli, 481 Grove, Sierra Madre. I was researching development issues in Sierra Madre and I came upon an article in the Los Angeles Times dated May 12, 1988, which really kind of boggled my mind. It stated that I, as mayor, proposed a moratorium on development in the hillsides of Sierra Madre. The moratorium specifically called for us to take a step back to review hillside development and to devise ordinances and standards that would protect the community. The council unanimously approved this moratorium. Ultimately, this provided an opportunity for a responsible group of volunteers in Sierra Madre to do a comprehensive study. And one of those volunteers was Mary Ann McGilvery, did considerable work on that. And this comprehensive study created a hillside development ordinance. It resulted in that. This is exactly what I'm proposing now for the city council to impose a moratorium on development in the city to get out in front of this issue. It's almost too late to get really out in front of it because we're reacting to some things now, but I'd like to know where this town is being taken and who have no interest in maintaining any specific identity that has been achieved for us in a lifetime. That's a lot of these developers. And maybe a majority of the citizens would like our population to stay in the realm of 11,000 rather than getting up there in the realm of 15,000 to 20,000, which is inconceivable. Maybe they would like to see the development numbers increase too and, you know, the number of parcels and buildings that we can look at. What do we, really, what can we afford to do here? It's always thought that when homes are developed or parcels in some way are developed, that it's a boon for the city. Yes, it's a short-term gain, but in the long term, it becomes an expense. And that's just what we see right now in the city. We're really up to our ears in expense in working through the many situations that we have in town. Finally, if we, on this water situation, finally, if we ever achieve complete replenishment of our wells, will we disconnect from MWD? And could we ever hope that increasing development, that we would be able to once again taste well water? And I think not. Thank you.
Thank you, Clem.
Mr. Mayor and council people, Kevin Pascal. I was just going to comment the fact that I know Bruce, Mr. Inman got up earlier and talked about our current usage of water. He didn't take into account that right across the street, we got a 95-suite assisted-living facility with in-house laundry that's going to come online. And I'm assuming that's going to use a lot of water, okay? Also, being on the planning commission, the houses at One Carter that were brought before us, were all five-bedroom, five-and-a-half-bath, okay? We had a project come before us at the last planning commission meeting. Architect got up, told me and the rest of the planning commission that it's a standard house, has five bedrooms and five baths. And I asked him, I said, "Where is that standard? It's not standard Sierra Madre." So it's not just, it's not just the big ones, it's everything. Because I really think that this city needs to maintain the water for its current residents. We're here, we live here, we've been here. Keep the water flowing. We don't need to bring more people in and suck it all out. Thank you.
Carol Parker Mariposa, and thank you for not putting on a time limit. I really appreciate that. All of us do. I had a speech planned, but after hearing Mr. Inman and all of us sitting here practically not even able to take a breath, I think we have something, we all know we have something that's way more than serious. I also have heard things on the radio and seen buses with advertisements and seen television ads. We're really in a terrible crisis. And my son lives in New York and the Niagara Falls in Buffalo, Canada, has less water than it's ever had and the farmers are really suffering in that area also. So it's nationwide. And I know there's floods in the central part of the United States, but there's also other places that are suffering like us. So when I hear this, I also think, and following up with Kevin, that we need to take care of ourselves. And with the Kensington coming, those people are going to expect what we already have, which is water. They're going to be paying a huge sum. So we need to take care of who we have and what we have with ourselves, our animals, our plants. We already had a bear come down and we are going to have other animals coming down because they are thirsty from our mountains. I would, you know, like to have something, I would like to suggest something to the city council and the water department, that we have more signs and better ideas on conserving. I lived in San Francisco when there was a water crisis and you took a shower with a friend. You took, that was San Francisco, and I was married, but, you know, something like that. If you're married, take a shower with a friend. I know the world is different and teenagers will pick up on that. But a three-minute shower, don't throw out any water, feed a plant. We can think of a lot of great ideas. I liked Mr. Bartoli's idea about forming a committee. We have to do something more to conserve water. I don't remember what the ad for the County of Los Angeles was about watering. It's like, I don't know, two minutes, twice a week. We have to do something more to conserve because, Mr. Inman, thank you so much for telling us the truth. I hope and presume you told us the truth. A year away is going to go fast. And I haven't had that ugly, disgusting water that all my friends have and everybody talks about, but I do buy bottled water and I take a minute shower and hope that that yellow gucky stuff doesn't come out. And I got one of those things on my shower so that I'm hoping I'm not going to get poisoned to death, nor my dog. But we have to do something to conserve, so I hope that we can all think of something and we have to all put it out to not just the city of Sierra Madre, but to our schoolchildren who, you know, go to Pasadena and let everybody know because this is serious. Thank you.
Pat Alcorn on Grand View. And I would just like to urge you all to declare a water hookup moratorium on all new water applications until this emergency is resolved. This will accomplish two things. It will give us time to come up with a plan and let our reservoirs recover. And it will also give us time to determine how we can accommodate increased water use that will occur with further development. Thank you.
Marguerite Schuster, Mount Wilson Trail. It really is a statewide emergency and it's foolish of us to talk as if the emergency is going to go away with an El Nino or two. The scientific evidence is that the last 200 years have been unusually wet years. If you look at the graphs. What we should look forward to in the future is not improvement, but something much worse than we have yet experienced. And to fail to take that, even that possibility into account at a point where we still have some wiggle room is foolhardy. The time for a building moratorium is when we can, when we can forestall some buildings, not when all of the available land has been built up. We can impose a building moratorium and then we have a fallback position of the water hookup moratorium that gives us a little more space and a little more wiggle room. If we don't do it now, we lose the opportunity to do it at all. Thanks.
Thank you, Marguerite.
Heather Allen on Grove. After listening to Mr. Inman, I didn't realize the importance of residents still needing to conserve the water. I'm glad he mentioned that. Not that I wasn't conserving already, but I'm a little puzzled as to why the thermometer isn't still up at Christine Court. Maybe we should think about putting that back up to remind people that it's important to continue conserving because we're not out of this mess yet. Just for the benefit of the listening audience, I wanted to explain that the city stands to gain thousands of dollars in property tax if units are built at Mater Delarosa or Stonehouse. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, the topic didn't come up tonight, but it might after public comment is closed. There might be what I feel is an unfounded concern about fear of being sued by a developer if we put up a moratorium or do anything that would prevent them from building. I wanted to say this now because we don't have second public comment time, so I wanted to make my opinion clear. I remember back in, I think it was 2005 or 2006, Councilwoman Tanya Torres said something along the lines of, "We have to allow development because we could be sued." This was the One Carter hearings. Well, we were sued anyway, several times, if I remember correctly. There's a saying that goes something like, "No decision made in fear is ever really supported in the universe." I don't think we should make any decisions based in fear. I think we should do the morally responsible thing. I say, implement the water moratorium and protect the residents' rights because we were here first and we voted you in to protect our interests. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mary Ann McGilvery on Elm. I think all of the arguments presented tonight are valid, they're emotional, they're real, and they represent the true feelings of the people in Sierra Madre. But I want to give you a summary argument for staff recommendation number three. That is for the building moratorium and the water hookup moratorium. I have five main reasons. Number one, it is within your purview and your authority to implement a building moratorium and a water service connection moratorium. Number two, there is precedent right here in our own city for a building moratorium. Such a moratorium was put into place regarding building and remodeling in the canyon until the canyon zone ordinance, in process, was completed. And I do think, Tara, you might remember that, or maybe it was Sandy sitting there, but we did put that moratorium in place for the full extent of the two years. Folks with projects in the works may not have liked it, but understood the need as a common good. Number three, you do not have the necessary tool to make decisions regarding building developments, whether it be lot splits, housing developments, building configurations, or zoning, because the general plan update is not approved and implemented. No fault to the steering committee, as Councilwoman Delmar so dearly knows. They, along with many volunteers, did what they were asked, but an intended 18-month process is five years later and it's still on the strategic plan, as everyone will see later on in this agenda. Number four, resources, particularly water, but not to exclude police and fire, traffic, access, circulation, noise, open space, recreational facilities, and wildlife considerations, cannot support additional development. And number five, the city will never meet the RENA requirements imposed by SCAG. And if you don't speak acronym, RENA is Regional Housing Needs Assessment and SCAG is Southern California Association of Governments, unless those requirements are mandated to be met within the proposed development. The timeframe of a two-year moratorium is more than ample to approve the plan as the people have articulated their vision of the community, looking out 20 years, and yes, they looked out 20 years. It is sufficient time to develop a growth management ordinance encompassing the use and availability of resources, including water. This ordinance would become a part of the general plan, just as the hillside ordinance and canyon zone ordinance are. SCAG will continue to assign RENA numbers despite the fact that they have no data to support the fact that this housing is necessary as it's been assigned. If you ask how many housing are built to satisfy RENA, any RENA numbers in the region, they can't tell you. I know, because I've asked that question many times at the HCD meetings. The answer is that they're not as concerned with outcomes as they are with the process. Isn't that right, Councilman Caposia? He's heard it too. The general plan is the ultimate trump card. It provides substantiation for our built-out definition, our stewardship of the watershed above us, and our use and availability of resources. It is the most important tool in the arsenal to keep Sierra Madre the way it is, which is what each of you promised to do when you campaigned for office. A building moratorium will facilitate the process of completing the general plan as the people wrote it. Plenty has been said about the water and the need for that. You really need no better reasons.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Any other comments?
My name is Richard McDonald. I'm the attorney for the developer of the Stonegate Lots. If I understand your general manager correctly, you have enough water for two years, that you have a contract with the MWD to provide you with any additional water, that there is therefore no shortage at the present time, that any, that at, you have a number of people in the audience who are anti-development, who want to use a building moratorium to stop development, that they want, you have a number of people like the speaker who just spoke, who want to use a building moratorium to finish a general plan, et cetera. But as the city attorney told you in the beginning, you can only impose a moratorium if there's a current and immediate threat. And when your district manager is telling you, you've got two years of water and a contract with MWD to provide you with any more that you need, and there's no evidence of anything from MWD not providing you what you need, then you don't have a current and immediate threat. With regard to the findings under 350, everything you've heard tonight that's anti-development may all be well and good in terms of general public policies to consider within your general plan, but again, they don't go to the underlying findings that you have to make as a matter of law. So I would suggest that where, the other point that I just want to make too is that, as your city attorney said, you only impose a moratorium to come up with a plan to how to deal with the purported shortage, but you already have a plan. You have a water conservation plan that apparently requires everybody to be cutting back 20%, but according to your district manager, people only cut back 5%. So you already have a plan in place that this doesn't seem to be being implemented. So you already have a plan in place that just doesn't seem to be being implemented very well at all. And lastly, with regard to new development versus old, just as a matter of, forget any particular project. If you look at the 2014 California Green Building Code versus the older building codes, the California Green Building Code has all sorts of water conservation features in it that make any new development, by definition, far more water efficient than the older homes in your city. So there's a point where enforcement, compliance with your existing plan is your short-term, safest course to go because based upon what your district manager has told you, there's no basis to make any of the findings associated with any immediate moratoriums. Maybe there is in March of 2015, when this issue comes back before you. Maybe there would be if the MWD didn't provide you what you requested, but that's not the evidence that's before you with regard to the very specific findings that you have to make to go down that path. So my recommendation would be that you try to get that 5% up to the 20% that it's supposed to be. There's a number of examples associated with low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads, all sorts of things that other cities have done. I know you don't like the other cities, but there's a lot of very progressive water conservation programs and landscaping as well that have worked very effectively in many, many cities throughout Southern California, from Santa Barbara to San Diego. And if you're not doing best practices in that regard, then you haven't fulfilled your own plan that sits on your own books. And that may be a very logical first step before you take what would arguably be a much more unfounded draconian step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Elaine McPherson, Sierra Madre Boulevard. I have never spoken at a meeting like this in my life. I came to this town specifically because it was this town. We paid more money to buy here than we could have bought there, or there, because we loved this town. This is a very special place. And if we allow ourselves to be railroaded, to become what is around us, we'll never get it back. And if we allow ourselves to be threatened, veiled, or unveiled, to operate out of fear, we might as well just, you know, forget, forget it. Just give up and go home and bury our heads under the covers and let it all happen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Bland. I am from the adjacent ghetto called Hastings Ranch.[798.31][798.31](laughter) And I want you guys to know that I love this place. Thank you. Anyway, what I want to say is just the principle of utility and what is the greatest good for the greatest number. It seems that we need to vote, I wish I could vote, vote for the moratorium. So I, I want to speak for the people that don't live here in Sierra Madre and see the physical charm and beauty that we should preserve for the future. And I agree, I urge you to consider the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Bring it back for discussion. Councilmember Delmar, this was your agenda item, so I'll let you start.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming out and sticking with us. So my first thing I would like to say is, why did I decide to put this on the agenda? Or wanted to see it come before the agenda? I was driving home from work one day on 7/10, and one of those big LA signs that you all have out in Los Angeles, and it said, "Severe drought. Don't be irresponsible." And I thought, we as a city are being irresponsible if we don't take whatever steps, whatever resources, whatever tools we have to make sure that we get our water conservation in check and in place, that we come up with a plan for the future on how we're going to handle droughts in the future, because this is not going to be the only one. We are dependent on a water district, the metropolitan water district, but we're not their customer. So we don't know, we have no guarantee if we're going to have water after March 15th, 2015. We have no idea if we're going to have a big fire come by this summer because we've been in a severe drought and that water that we now have in reserves for the four cities is going to be used up to take care of a fire. We are irresponsible as citizens, as a city council, as people that, the human race, if we don't take everything that we can do right now to put in place, holding off on any new water hookups to our, to our water system. We have three tools that we can use. I would like to abdicate that we go ahead and go to conservation number three, phase three. I think we have to do it. I absolutely think we have to put some advertisements in place. I like the thermometer idea. We need to get people conserving. We need to do that. We need to put in our building moratorium. And we need to do a water hookup moratorium because that's, can be immediately done. And the faster we get started on this, the faster we can work on our plans. We do have committees that will be working on our water conservation plan. We'll, the general plan's coming up to the city council here pretty soon. And one of the things the general plan says, that we have to look at our resources, all of our resources, when considering any sort of development in Sierra Madre. That new development is contingent on that supply. And we need to get our point where we have supply for everybody who wants to come into Sierra Madre, but most importantly, we have to have that supply for those that exist now. Moratoriums are temporary, they're not long-lasting. At the end of this, we'll have a plan that we can take well into the future for our children, for our grandchildren, and for everybody here in Sierra Madre. So that's what I would like to see done. And I thank you all for coming out tonight.
Who would like to go next?
I'm really pleased to see this level of participation. It's the first big meeting that I've had the privilege of being at as a new council I see a variety of things going on here. It's a, I try to be rational about things and systematic, and I see three different issues here. I see a water discoloration issue, which I campaigned vigorously on, and I believe we came through on in our last meeting. We spent a considerable amount of that time in that meeting addressing that issue. We brought in a very significant consultant who's at work right now in addressing those problems, and we're confident that over time, that problem will be solved. So the water discoloration issue, I heard from several speakers, and I feel like that needs to be separated out. There's a water quantity issue, and the facts are in dispute. We are told that we have about a year's worth of water that we have rights to, but there's plenty of water in that pipeline going from east to west on Grand View that we're hooked into, and MWD is basically good for at least two years. So I've tried to pin down our, our staff as to what they could tell us, and they can't tell us. The answer was no. We don't know if that water will be here for two years, but it could. It could be here longer. So there's, I don't see a very solid factual founding on the water quantity question. The third issue, we're not addressing here in a, in a very forthright manner, and that is development. Not a single project in front of us tonight, not one. It's my view that you take a look at each one of those projects and evaluate them on their merits and follow the process. And the process for a couple of these projects has barely begun. So as far as I'm concerned, we have to be very careful about trying to mix these issues just from a good, solid, clear public policy perspective. I think it's obvious that we, the citizens, have let the ball drop. We have not conserved enough water. I campaigned on that too this spring. I said, as soon as I got in, I wanted to see a very significant water conservation effort. I strongly support moving to phase three of the water conservation ordinance. I believe that will get us in the right direction. It will put us all under the gun, we'll all have to start saving water, and it will stop any new hookups for the considerable time, for the foreseeable future. If things get worse, and they may very well be much worse just in a few months, I'm open to any one of a number of these other three measures, particularly the new water hookup. I'm not ready to go there yet, but you know, depending upon what things look like in October or November, it would seem to me that if El Nino is not materializing, if the MWD recasts its supply data and they tell us, "Hey, it's not two, it's not two years, it's going to be a year, it's going to be 18 months," then I'm ready. Okay? I don't really see that emergency right now. And I'm only evaluating it based on what the question was brought before us. So I can support what Councilmember Delmar is saying about the phase three of the water conservation ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just I want to respond to a couple of the comments made. Mayor Bartoli, you mentioned in 1988, putting that moratorium on to do the hillside ordinance. I think that hillside ordinance is fantastic, but I think the point you're trying to make is, we're kind of faced with another threat now, is the recovery, the economic recovery is taking place. Sierra Madre property is so damned valuable that we're seeing applications for lot splits and of course, the mansionization that's going on. And so this has just happened recently where it's become a real big problem. So I agree with you that it is time to take a look at that again and really take a hard look as, do we have the protections in the general plan? And once we ensure that our general plan is absolutely representing the vision of what we want the town to be, we need to get our ordinances in line with that to have appropriate development. And former Mayor Mary Ann McGilvery, you made the comment about a quote-unquote, "A growth management ordinance." So that's what I think we need to look at, just going forward, how we manage growth. I do agree with Mr. McDonald, the attorney for Stonegate. He suggested that we are here to use a building moratorium to restrict development. I want to assure him and all of you that I don't think it's appropriate to use a building moratorium to dictate land use policy. That being said, I am in support of putting a moratorium on because of the water problems that we have. We need to solve our water problems. Without going into all the things that have changed over the last even 90 days, but back to Mayor Mary Ann's comments, when I first became aware of how desperate our water problem was potentially becoming is when we went to test the RENA numbers and Director Inman gave us a graph of the decline of the Raymond Basin. And you know, first thing he asked is, okay, well, the trend is pointing downward. How soon do we hit the bottom? Well, the bottom came a lot sooner than we all thought. So to me, that was the first sign that, you know, I mean, maybe we should have recognized this long ago, but we have a serious problem. And as a resident of Sierra Madre for over 30 years, we've always talked about how wonderful our water is. When we first moved to town, we used to buy Sparklet's water, not knowing how great Sierra Madre's water is. So we canceled that, and I really believe that pumping our groundwater, which we've done for 107 years, and now we're in a point where we can't do it, I'd like to get us back to that point where we, our residents, can draw from that special resource that makes Sierra Madre what it is. I hope we can get there. It's not going to happen quickly, but to do that, I think we need two things. Is we, as residents, need to ensure that we're using water efficiently and effectively, and we need to make sure that new development does not draw and put increased pressure on it. So we've kicked around ideas, but we, one of the things that we should look for, staff coming to us, is perhaps a way to mitigate new water use by offsetting somewhere else. Like, and I agree, lawns are a real problem for water use. Perhaps new development can put money through development fees into a fund where residences can take some of that money per square foot and eliminate their lawn, thus offsetting the new water that a new developer would use. That way, you don't have a problem. You're not using any more than you would have before you developed, so maybe that's a way we can go about it. We do need to tighten up on our ordinances too, to just to make sure that we are implementing the green building standards. We kicked around some ideas before about requiring gray water stub outs. We might now, might be the time where we take a hard look at that and implement that, knowing how bad the problem is. I want to refer to comments made by Planning Commissioner Pascal. Keep water for current residents, and that's what I'm talking about here, is that we have this resource. I personally don't like being imposed by using metropolitan water, district water. It is not the same quality as that great groundwater that we have today, but we're doing everything we can to make it better because the situation for many people is unacceptable today. Ms. Schuster, you bring up a really good point, that a lot of water rights and water studies have been done based on what's happened in the last 200 years, and we're learning now through some really prominent scientists that we've kind of over-allocated water based on those optimistic assumptions of what has happened in the last couple hundred years is going to continue forward. We don't know how severe the drought will be, or what climate change, whether that's caused by humans, or whether it's caused by sunspots, or whatever. It's, there's something going on and we need to deal effectively with that. Fear of litigation. I don't think anybody here is afraid of litigation, but we do consider litigation in every decision we make. I mean, look how much money we spend on lawyer's fees. Everybody that's joined this council has asked questions and looked for ways to reduce that. What we're trying to do is protect our taxpayers against unnecessary litigation. So we don't want to impose things that are, on its face, not defendable. And everything we do here, I believe that this council is going to ensure that anything we get into regarding litigation, we've got a damn good chance to win. That being said, I do support putting a moratorium on right now. We're not afraid of it, but we don't want to throw your taxpayers' dollars down the drain, so to speak. So, so that being said, I'm in favor of, I think we need to go to a phase three. I'm in favor of imposing both moratoriums on and to give us time to sort this out and make sure we can get to the point where we are sustainable on our groundwater. And I would look, I don't know what, you know, we get back to discussion, what other direction you'd be looking back from us, but when you, you come back to us before we actually have the hearing prior to imposing the moratorium, that we have some very specific options about where a line is drawn, as to what can be, you know, what would fall under the moratorium and what wouldn't, as depending on how far along you've got with a development project, or a person that's about to build their house, or is about to turn on the water. There's various degrees of investment, and I want to be sure that we treat people fairly. If they've made a substantial investment or very close to getting something done, I don't want to cut them off unnecessarily. So those are my comments, and thank you all again for everybody coming out. I do appreciate the comments and, you know, they, I think they do weigh heavily on what the council is doing as, as a result of that.
You do.[1724.82][1724.82](applause)
It's, it's always difficult going after the Mayor Protem. You know, he's so thorough and appreciate the comments from all the council members and from the residents. You know, I think that going forward, we'll just put the building moratorium on every agenda so that we get all of you here to help us through this stuff. But thank you very much. I think that it's clear that, that we do have a serious water issue. And, you know, from the comments that we heard, from staff, I agree, you know, with Councilmember Goss. We don't know how long our supplies are, whether it's two years, whether it's a year, whether it's more or less, but I do think that we need to do something immediately to, to address that. And again, I agree with most of the council members in terms of, you know, protecting current residents. You know, I want to make sure that, that we do get back to our groundwater, that we can pump from our own basin as quickly as possible. It's better water. It's water that, that I grew up drinking here, that has great fluoride in it, and the MWD water just doesn't compare. Now, I'll skip quickly because I think everything that I was going to say has been said to, to affecting this, you know, in the, in the best way possible, in my view. So I'll disagree a bit with Councilmember Delmar. I think the council did foresee this lat- I think the council did foresee this lot, two years ago, when we started talking about a water conservation ordinance. And when we implemented that water conservation ordinance, we did know that this was going to come. We didn't know how soon, but we knew that there was going to come a time where we needed a tool to cut off new water hookups in town. And we knew we needed a tool that would help current residents conserve, but would also help us make sure that if there was new development coming in, that we could say no, there's no, no water hookups. To be clear, our, our water conservation ordinance does that. Our water conservation ordinance, if you go to Phase Three, says that no new water hookups can be hooked up, can be implemented. And to me, you know, I mean, call, you know, tomato, tomato, that's essentially what we're talking about with the building moratorium. We are saying that we do not want any new water hookups. We want to make sure that the current residents are given first priority and that although that, we hope that you're conserving and we hope that we can conserve more, that we are taken care of before any new development comes. And I make that point because I am in full favor of going to Phase Three. Phase Three conservation would mean that everyone here around the stasis and in the audience and at home have to increase their conservation to 30%, which is not going to be easy, and some people aren't going to be able to do it, they're just not. But I think this is a problem where everyone is going to have to conserve more. But Phase Three also means that there are no more water hookups. And that doesn't, unlike a building moratorium, that doesn't have a time, a time lapse. That doesn't have to last for 45 days. It doesn't have to last for only two years. That lasts as long as we think Phase Three is necessary. And I'll tell you what, Phase Three is necessary right now. And if you think about this in terms of long-term, I don't think that a building moratorium and what we can do in Phase Three is, is very different at all. I think that if you put in Phase Three, there are no new water hookups, there's no new development, and we, as a city council, can refine our water conservation ordinance. We can talk about the general plan. As I so inequently tried to explain during the public comment, and I was reminded from the public, I just didn't want the conversation to be targeted specifically at certain development projects. Because I think this is about all new development. This is about any new developer that wants to come in and develop any piece of land, not necessarily Madre de La Rosa, not necessarily Stonehouse. This is citywide. And I think that the best way for us to protect ourselves is to implement Phase Three. And I think after we implement Phase Three, all new water hookups are cut off, then I think that we can evaluate in the next 45 days, 60 days, whether we think that the additional water, the water moratorium perhaps, or the building moratorium perhaps, gives us anything that we don't already have. In my mind, it's hard for me to see what we don't already get from the Phase Three water conservation. Again, there's no new water hookups. We don't have to make the findings under the government code. We don't have to make the findings under the water, the water code. And I, I'm not going to pat ourselves on the back, but the, the past council did a good job, and past councils before us who implemented the water conservation ordinance did a good job in foreseeing this problem. And so what I would like to propose, and again, this is, I think, a matter of taking a different path to the same destination, is implementing Phase Three now. Again, that cuts off the new water hookups. And then if we think that we are not able to implement what we think are the plan to handle the situation, and in my mind, the plan is really one of making sure our general plan has enough teeth to make sure that new development that we don't think fits into Sierra Madre doesn't come in. I think it really is about zoning, it's about the general plan. And I think that we have a good team that obviously gave us the draft, and city council's going to be considering that soon. And I think that we can do that. We can make sure that the general plan protects this town and addresses the water issue while Phase Three is in effect. And I'm just, I'm hard pressed to think why we would need necessarily to go to the full building moratorium through the government code when we have already, we already are able to do that under our water conservation ordinance. And that's where I stand. I think that all the points that were made by the other council members and the public were good. I think we have a water issue. I think that we should make sure that through Phase Three of our conservation ordinance, we don't allow any new hookups, which effectively is allowing no new development. And I'm prepared to go, go forward on that. That's where I stand, so. We have, we have, it seems like the consensus is Phase Three. I mean, everyone up here wants Phase Three. The question is, you know, if we were to implement today, or not for today, but to give direction for staff to come back with possibly implementing a water moratorium and a building moratorium on top of Phase Three. To me, you know, we can have that conversation. I don't think that that is an immediate necessity, considering what we can do under Phase Three, considering what Phase Three does. But I'm happy to hear any, any thoughts. I know Councilmember Delmar was about to say something, but.
I, I think if we are in consensus that we need to go Phase Three, then there's no reason why we can't start working on and build a moratorium and a water hookup moratorium. Those can be lifted whenever we want as well. I just think we need to have something in place, not just for our council, but for the one who's going to come in a couple of years, to make sure that everybody is on the same page. And a building, what the building moratorium does is it forces our hand. It forces us legally to take the actions necessary to come up with a good growth management plan, or whatever you want to call it. If we just do the conservation, it doesn't really force our hand. So if you're willing, and we have consensus to go ahead and basically say we're not going to have any water hookups, then there's no harm or foul to institute another moratorium. That's, I just think it's better for us to do that.
We have consensus on the Phase Three.
I think we do.
What we have then is, are you okay with not doing? Did I hear right?
I really think we have to put some other teeth to it besides, besides the conservation. I think we have to have at least one of the other moratoriums in place. And it's not going to do any, it's not going to be any different. The results are going to be the same, but having a moratorium in place tells the community we're serious about this, and it forces our hand to make sure that we come up with a really good plan going forward. It forces us to do that in the future councils.
Councilmember Delmar, I'm very serious. I don't want Phase Three personally. It's going to cost me, it's going to, I've got a 13,300 square foot lot, just bought in 2009. We're going to have to completely re-landscape it. It will cost me a lot. I, I really don't want to do this, but as far as I am concerned, if we're serious about water conservation, we need to all step up to the plate. And if we can accomplish the objective of holding off development that we may not have water for, until we've got a better look at the lay of the land, I think that's the prudent thing to do. When we, when we say things like building moratorium, it is an extreme measure. It's, it's, it's a meat-axe approach. And as, as far as I'm concerned, a meat-axe approach generally hurts people. It means there are people in this town that would like to do some legitimate building and probably are not going to be able to, and that's, that's, that's probably not fair to them.
I don't think that's true.
Well, I can, I don't know. We have 11,000 people in town, and I'm guessing that some of them would like to do some building in the next couple of years and not have a huge impact on the water while they're putting in conservation measures into whatever they're building. And as far as I'm concerned, if you're worried about any of the projects that have been mentioned tonight, each one of those has to stand or fall based on its own merits. And that's what we're here for, that's what the planning commission is here for, and I think we, we just need to take a deep breath and let that happen.
But the Phase Three does impose a moratorium.
So it's going to.
It does, yeah.
So you just, but, but your argument is, you have people who want to do building, and you want them to be able to do that. When you go to Phase Three, they're not going to be able to do that. They're not going to be able to get a new water hookup.
Well, not a new water hookup, right.
Right. But a building moratorium, when it, if we direct staff, would say exactly that, it's to affect the new development, any new homes that are being, anybody who's going to require a new water hookup. But I do think that you need to have some more teeth to this than just conservation. I think we need to have either the water moratorium or the building moratorium. The results are going to be the same. It's just how we go, how we go forward that's going to be different.
Can I ask a question on that? Sorry. And I wanted to get to this. So Madam City Attorney, I'm, I'm struggling to know, and to Councilmember Delmar's point, look, I'm all about more teeth here. I'm just wondering if, does the building moratorium or the water moratorium give us any more teeth, quote-unquote, than the Phase Three? I mean, they effectively, in my mind, do the same thing, so I'm wondering why you would do all three, I guess.
They, they do do the same thing, but there are some different authorities. And I, if, if the council does go to Phase Three and uses its discretion to also, under the authority of that ordinance, stop new water hookups, although it may not say that you need to make findings, I would, you will be making some findings to support that. That, that's, I think that you do need some support for that. The, under the building moratorium, the only difference is that it's temporary, it lasts for two years, and you, the city will be forced within that two-year period to come up with a comprehensive development plan overhaul, look at the general plan, et cetera, in order to address what may be missing now regarding regulations that will require water conservation in terms of new development. So now, that doesn't mean that you couldn't just use the water conservation ordinance, go to Phase Three, adopt the no new hookups, and then voluntarily take the time to actually do that development review. You could do it that way. The building moratorium though, forces you to do it within two years. As for the water hookup moratorium, under the water code, that does require findings, but it does not require you to wait until things are so dire that you truly have an emergency at your door and you can't even serve the customers you have. It does not have to be that type of emergency. You are allowed, under case law, to look ahead and avoid that from happening. And really, the only distinction between the authority under the ordinance and under the water code is the level of support and findings that, that you will make in order to put either into place. But ultimately, I know it's a very long answer. Ultimately, you do get to the same place, and yes, you could just do the Phase Three and do the no water hookups. You absolutely can do that. We will put some findings to back it up, and, and you could just do that.
And here, and here's my thinking, and I'll just make this brief. So if we put the Phase Three in now, we stop all new water hookups, effectively a building moratorium. If we also put on the building moratorium, we have at most two years, okay? We have at most two years to utilize that time. So there are numerous projects that we don't even know about, or that we might even know about, that are going to take a lot longer than two years, okay, to get down the pipeline. There are things in, in the community, undeveloped sites, that we have no idea how long they're going to take, but we know they're going to take longer than two years. If we institute the building moratorium in two weeks, we have until 2016 to figure this out, and then we never get to do the building moratorium again. If we can do that process without instituting the building moratorium, which effectively is doing the same thing, we save a bullet. I mean, we save an arrow. I mean, there's, that building moratorium can be instituted in 2019, 2020, whenever the city might need it, more so than now. And to the water hook, to the water ordinance, the water moratorium, you know, I think that that's a different moratorium, and I think that that's a different consideration. But I, I guess my view is, why, why do you waste two bullets right now when you can save a bullet, you know, later? But I'm happy, yeah, I'm happy to hear.
Yeah, I'll argue something that might reconcile. Because what I like about the, the, what is it, the 65858?
Government code, yeah.
Yeah, is that it does force this discipline. We start off with a 45-day moratorium. After that 45 days, we consider extending it, but at that time, we, we come up with a plan, so to speak, to alleviate the conditions. And of course, that might take up to two years. And what I would like, if we were to do this, is that I'd, if it was me, just off the top of my head, I'd say we do it for an additional year, then come back with another public hearing, air it out, and decide if we have to go further. Now, to your point, could do that anyway, but I, I like the discipline imposed. If we impose the discipline upon ourselves to kind of go through this process and treat it as if it was the state moratorium, and we, we go through those findings, and we come up with a plan on what we're going to do to address the problem and lay that out in 45 days, I think I'd be good with it. So I, I mean, I'm agreeing with you. As long as we impose the discipline that this would impose on us, if we were able to do that ourselves and agree to do something very similar, basically, after 45 days, say very clearly what we are going to do to alleviate the condition and, you know, what we're going to work towards.
Yep.
And then I'd be okay with it.
I actually agree with that, except I would put a water, the water hookup moratorium in there, only because at some point, hopefully, we will start to build up our reservoirs. We will start to maybe lift that 30%, just go back to Phase Two to help people with their yards. And if we lift it, we have nothing else in the bank.
So we'd lose two of the three bullets then, is what you're suggesting.
The water moratorium does not have any time restrictions on it, so that, I would just put those two in place, and then perhaps come back with a building moratorium if we need to in the future, as long as we put into play some discipline to make sure that we get a plan in place. And I would even put it, I would, I would put a time limit on us to do that.
Any comment?
You know, I'm just not persuaded we need to be that reconian. I'm, I'm, I'm ready to conserve. I'm ready to conserve. I'm ready to do it myself. I'm ready to ask all my neighbors to join me, and I'm, I'm ready to ask the city to bite down hard, and I'm ready to come back and revisit this very soon in the fall. If we have a real strong opinion that think the situation is worsening, I just do not like this rush, which I think is frankly, completely aimed at developmental projects that are, may, may be in the works, or maybe at least in, in somebody's mind in the works, that could all, all be addressed very forthrightly on their merits, one at a time, as we've always done in this town. So it just doesn't, I'm not persuaded we need to take that kind of action. I, what, what Mayor Protem Capocchio is saying, I think, is a reasonable approach. I would be supportive of something like that. If we're laying out some goals for what we're trying to achieve, in terms of what we're trying to achieve with water usage, in terms of, in general terms, sure. Just after, I, I want to see the language, obviously the devil's in the details.
What is your objection to a water moratorium? That you put it in place now, and then you come back and.
Why do we need it?
I think we need it.
If we have a, if we have a, if we have a Phase Three in, we don't need it.
We're still going to have to come back with findings, and the Phase Three with those findings, if any of those factors change, then we have to go back up to Phase Two, and then you have nothing in place. You have nothing in place. And this isn't about development. This isn't about development projects. And I know that we kind of mix the two in here. This has to do with being responsible, knowing that we have a general plan coming down the line, and saying, right now, we're not going to have any, any, any new water hookups. Does it matter where you live in the city, or where, where your property is? You can't split that property and add another one. We're just taking a break. We need to have that in place in order to, to make sure that we have a really good water management system. We also just spent $50,000 to hire a consultant because we, our water, people feel, is not adequate, and we can't be turning the metropolitan water on and off until we get all of that fixed. So, you know, you go to Phase Three, and all you're doing, that's really a limited time, because the conditions are going to change at some point, and you just need to have another water hookup moratorium, because that really talks about our supply. That really talks about the fact that our water district is not able to support existing people. It is not able to do that. We ran out of water. And that's what that wa, that's what that water code says. We ran out of water. We cannot sustain 11,000 people during a drought. We have to do something different.
But our water system is sustaining 11,000 people right now.
No, our water just is not. It is not.
That's what this is, right here.
No.
So, okay. Well, I don't think we have consensus on the, on the, on the water moratorium itself. And I'll just make one last point, and I'll be completely clear, so that it's clear up here and it's clear to the, the audience. There is nothing that the water moratorium does that Phase Three doesn't do, okay? There is nothing, there is nothing that it does. And it is true. I'm sorry. But we, Phase Three puts in, puts in place a policy to where we do not allow any new water hookups. A water moratorium puts in place a policy where we don't allow any new water hookups. And the findings are going to be similar, okay? okay? The issue, and not going into the legality of it, is the water code is somewhat uncharted territory, okay, to say, and that's all I'm going to say, our Phase Three ordinance, of our water conservation ordinance, this is an ordinance that we have vetted, that we have passed, that is locktied, that can be, to Councilman Delmar's, Delmar's point, I don't agree that this is necessarily a short-term thing. That, we can keep Phase Three as long as we need to, as long as we think that the findings are there. And the water conserv, the water moratorium is no different. So, my point, and my point why we wouldn't do both is because one does exactly what the other one does. So, I don't think we...
So, it doesn't matter?
So, to, well, if it doesn't matter, then because of the uncharted legal territory, why one gets us into?
And this ordinance has not been tested either.
I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so we weren't going to go there. So, this ordinance hasn't, so that's why I'm saying you need to have at least two things in place, in case one doesn't work, you know, you need to have two in place. They're both going the same way. Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
City Attorney, do we need a four-fifths vote to do the water code restrictions?
The water code doesn't actually require a four-fifths vote. I am suggesting a four-fifths vote is a good thing to do if you want to adopt it as an urgency measure and put it into place immediately.
Yeah. Okay.
So, we should wait for Michelle.
But we, we have to wait till next, we have to have a public hearing seven, we have to post it in a paper seven days before we can actually make that.
That's correct. This evening, there is no opportunity this evening, just so everyone's clear on that, to actually take any of these actions this evening. This is for direction to be given to staff to bring back an action that would be taken at, you know, the next available meeting.
So, what we could do, I suppose, is, we're going to come back and do it again. So, what, I, you know, we're all on the same page as far as the Phase Three, so we've got that kind of in our back pocket. I'm pretty sure we'll get a unanimous vote on that one, and it remains to be seen whether we can implement one of the other components of this as well. So, what if you came back, and I hate to ask to do all that work, but the findings are the same either way, so could you draft three different resolutions?
Absolutely.
And we've come, then come back, and we'll walk out of here with at least the Phase Three, and we might get one more.
And can you please do the seven-day notice for the water code?
Yes.
Yeah. No, it's fine. Yes.
Those are all the required notices, so.
And, and I think we'll just focus the next, I think we want to focus on the difference between the three and what one gives, because, look, I mean, if, if we realize that the water conservation, or I keep saying, the water moratorium does give us more teeth and gives us more than our own does, then, then we'll go down that path. I just, I need to, I need to hear a little bit more about this, because I don't think, based on everything I've heard tonight and what I've read, that's the case, so.
Okay, I want to make, I want to ask one more question, if I can, just to be clear. Does the state water code moratorium require a 10-day or a 7-day? I thought I read 10-days in here.
Seven.
Seven? They're both seven. Okay.
Seven. The building moratorium is 10. The state, yes, that's where you're getting the...
Ah, the building moratorium. Okay, so...
Water code is 7.
Can we post 10-days then?
The soonest, I'm looking at the calendar, the soonest we would publish could be this Saturday, because our adjudicated paper publishes once a week, as you're aware.
Yeah.
And I should, this Saturday, we would have...
But she needs it before Saturday.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. It's exactly 10-days.
Can you get it done? Can you get it to the paper, so, in time for her to get it in there?
We can let the paper know to save some space.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that covers all the bases, then, and then we'll, we'll decide next time.
We can decide next time.
Will Rochelle be back by then?
Yes.
Yes, she will. Is there anything else that you need from us at this point?
No, we understand.
City Manager or the Attorney? Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for coming. We will allow you to leave now that, now that we're done, so.
We would like you to stick around.
Yeah, you can stick around if you like.
Budget talks.
There'll be free donuts. Just kidding.
Now, it feels like a planning commission meeting, right? Everybody gets something laced.
Let's take a little break. Let's take a little break.
Six, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Are we ready, Mr. Mayor?
We are ready.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is consideration of reapportment and appointment of applicants to vacant Commissioner's seat, seats. Each year at this time, the last meeting of the fiscal year, the City Council reviews our board and commission appointments. According to the city's municipal code, technically speaking, all commission seats can be reevaluated at the end of each fiscal year. Historically, what the council has done is any, I'm on the wrong one, are any commission appointments where commissioners have completed their first term and have indicated to us that they are interested in serving a second term. Those are the positions that are brought before the City Council for the council to decide whether or not to appoint commissioners to an additional term. The reapportments on your agenda this evening are Darlene Matheson for Community Services Commission. She would be starting a second term if reappointed. Jackie Pragola for the Senior Service, Senior Commission. She would be starting a second term if she's reappointed. And Barry Ziff to the Library Board of Trustees, who was serving an unexpired previous term of another commissioner or a board member. He would be actually beginning his first full term. Those are the three commissioners that are eligible for reapportment. In addition, the report also mentions there is one commissioner who was eligible for reapportment to the Senior Commission. He has indicated he does not wish to serve the second term, so there is a vacancy on the Senior, Senior Services Commission. There are a number of commissioners who have completed terms and are not eligible for reapportment because they've served their two terms. That's PJ Cibral, who was a youth member of the Community Services Commission. David Crochetteer, another Community Services Commissioner. Thomas Pendleberry, a Planning Commission member. And Pete Cibral, Library Board of Trustees member. Let's see. There were also two vacancies created in our commissions when Commissioner, Council Member, current Council Member Eras Mendi was a former Community Services Commissioner. And of course, Council Member Gene Goss was a former Library Board of Trustees member, so we do have a number of vacancies. The only thing that's a little different from previous reports to the council on this matter is the council's direction regarding the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission, E E N R. A year ago, almost exactly a year ago, the council created the new commission by combining former tree commissioners and Green Committee members. And the council's hope was that by July of 2015, through regular attrition, it would get down to a seven, seven-member commission. And as tree commissioners resigned, Green Commissioners could apply for the tree commissioner seats. What's happened is we had that attrition occur in a one-year period, so we actually are down to seven members today, which is the number of commission members the council wanted on this commission. The staff report used the council's previous direction from a year ago that former tree commissioners would serve on the E E N R until their term on the tree advisory commission would have expired, and that former Green Committee members and termed-out tree commission members could apply for any positions vacated by the former tree commission. Following that general guideline, the staff report shows what terms each of these seven remaining E E N R commissioners would fall into. The only one who could, who has technically completed two terms would be Caroline Brown, but those, of course, were, most of that term was as a tree commissioner. The council could appoint her to a new first term as a E E N R committee, should the council decide to do that. And then all of the other positions have at least a year left. Some, some don't, don't complete a first term till 2019. And it shows which would be first term and second term. So staff is just seeking council's authorization that this is how we should, what terms these current E E N R commissioners should fit into. And there are other options presented. I won't go into them, but, because it's late and I'm tired. But at this point, we're just seeking the council's approval of the commissioners eligible for reapportment and that the council agrees with these seven E E N R commissioners serving the terms mentioned in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Yes. My question is because I got really confused, so I just, I just need to kind of, okay. So for the, the folks that termed, like Carolyn Brown, and it looks like Jeff Hall, like this Kim Kelly, she, so her partial, she did a partial term on the Green Committee, no, she did a partial term on the E Environment Committee, but was on the Green Commission, right?
No, the best way to explain, there's two, we dropped them in alphabetically. The council could put really any of these individuals in any of the spaces. What we did, what we did for, for Kim Klimer Kelly, actually for Cole Butler, Kim Klimer Kelly, and Margaret Schuster, those were three former Green Committee members. We had to drop them into, the council wanted to maintain the terms of office that former tree commissioners would have had, so we dropped those people just in alphabetical order into what the previously vacated tree commissioner appointment was.
Okay, that's why I got totally confused. I missed that whole sentence. Okay, now, now I get it. Thank you.
Caroline Brown, it, you know, what we said, looking back at what we had agreed to, is that she's eligible to apply for the seat vacated. Has she applied?
They, we got down to seven, so no one has formally applied. I can tell you, she is interested in serving again.
Okay, so we did.
We got down to the seven members, so we didn't really request application because we had seven already. We did, we did inquire if she was interested in serving again.
And she did say that.
And she did say she is interested in serving again.
So, okay.
Yeah, and just to follow up by, this is, this is a little different than what will happen going forward, right? I mean, obviously, if, if Caroline technically, you know, is the seventh member and doesn't have to reapply for a new first term, that doesn't mean that when every member of the E N R Commission comes up that they can somehow like redo their first term or anything. This is just, she's unique because she's the seventh person.
She's unique because she's the person who terms out this year. We, the staff report actually recommends that the next commissioner to term out, you know, the next one is.
Is Jeff Hall.
Is Jeff Hall, 2015. The staff report actually recommends, that's a year from now, at that point, open it back up again.
Right.
This would be staff's recommendation.
And I guess I'm concerned with Jeff maybe coming back in a year and saying, you know, hey, I really love this commission, you know, he can obviously reapply.
He can reapply.
But, you know.
The, the council's resolution on appointing commissioners, there's a sentence at the bottom that says ultimately the council can, to put it bluntly, do whatever they want to do. You can appoint people who haven't even applied.
So they don't have to take a break after their second term?
They, according to the resolution, it should.
Okay.
They should.
Can I point something out? The, the, what we had drafted says between the period of July 23rd, 2013, and July 9th, 2015, this procedure will follow, and that's what I had just read. But if he terms out on June 30th, that's still within the July 9th, 2015 window. He'd be eligible just the same as Caroline, just for straight-up reapportment.
We could, that, we could implement that.
Well, the reason I say that is because what I wanted to do is stick to what we decided and not reinvent the wheel again. And I wanted, I wanted.
Yeah, which we talked about for a long time.
Right, so I wanted this to be clear, and under my reading of this, Jeff would also be eligible to be just like Carolyn and just say, hey, I want to be on it. Then beyond that, they would have to.
They'd fall outside of July 2015.
They'd fall outside of that, then they would have to apply, and we would take applications. And I suppose we could bring one of them back, depending on who else applied. But I just wanted to make it really clear that those two seem to fall under what we had agreed to.
You're correct. Now that you point that out, I agree, it was to July 9, 2015.
Okay.
And he falls just shy of that.
All right.
Okay, good.
I think we're good on this.
Yeah.
I feel consensus is brewing.
It's brewing.
Fancy that, right?
We haven't gotten there yet.
That's right. We'll open it up for public comment.
Are you taking applicants then for Community Service Commissioner at all?
Not yet.
That's the next item.
Oh, the next item, yes. Yeah, yeah. Good to see you. We will bring it back for discussion.
I'm good with what's proposed.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
With the clarification that Mr. Hall can serve again, just like Caroline Brown do.
Do we need a motion? Do you?
Yes.
Okay, so I entertain a motion.
I move that we reappoint commissioners as presented in the presentation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. Onto item number six, Community Services Commission.
This item is for the City Council to select two applicants to fill two vacancies on the Community Services Commission. There were five applications that were received. According to the council's process, each, the council members received their applications approximately 30 days ago for an opportunity to individually interview the applicants. Then at tonight's meeting, each council member gives their recommendation to the mayor, and then the mayor subsequently puts an appointment forward for a formal vote by the council. The applicants received in alphabetical order, Mr. Andy Benscombe, Ms. Meredith Keith, David Loera, Jr., Ms. Debbie Sheridan, and Mr. Robert Taggert. I would like to mention that Mr. Taggert did email staff today that he has withdrawn his application and is, is not under consideration this evening. We did invite the applicants to be present this evening to introduce themselves and answer questions of the council. I'm not sure now how many, how many remain.
Yeah, I don't think we have. And then we have Steinberg, yeah.
Well, one of the gentlemen was here.
He was, yeah. For the record, Andy Bencosme was here, and he introduced himself.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name's Mary Steinberg. I live on Auburn Avenue. I'm speaking for Debbie Sheridan. This is her application for Community Services Commissioner. This is her letter and application. I'm sorry that I'm not able to be present this evening for your selection of Community Services Commissioner as I'm out of town. My background is one of service to the city of Sierra Madre. I was a member of the General Plan Updates Steering Committee and liaison for the outreach team, which assisted the consultants with many tasks, and our team also publicized the Town Hall forums. I learned a tremendous amount about our city during these four years. I have an MBA with a concentration in marketing. I've also served as deputy city clerk, am involved in City Club and their numerous activities, including board member and recording secretary, was a member of the SM3 TV Committee, member of the Art Review Board, and while on the Parents Board for La Salle, was publicity chairperson, wrote articles for the Sierra Madre Weekly and Arcadia Weekly. I also served as publicity chairperson, referee scheduler, referee, board member for AYSO, as well as coach, team mom, and ran a Fourth of July interregional soccer tournament. My three kids played baseball and softball at Heasley and Dapper. During those years, I was on the softball board, ran the Heasley snack bar, and assisted in the Dapper diner, coached, and was also team mom. I've spent innumerable hours on the tennis courts, marched in the Fourth of July parade with my dogs Roxy and Thatcher for the dog park, which became a reality for Sierra Madre. I am currently spending time in the parks with my three young grandchildren. Thank you for your consideration, Deb Sheridan. I just wanted to say I've known Debbie Sheridan for over 20 years. We've been good friends. In addition, I know she's such a hard worker, she's very smart, and also is dedicated to the well-being of Sierra Madre. Thank you for your attention.
Mary?
Okay, yeah, I have a copy.
All right. Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, we'll bring it back. And how we've done this in the past, you know, depending on how many applicants we have, if there's two seats, sometimes if there's a lot of applicants, we'll take three, your top three. And with four people, I don't know if we need, necessarily need to do that. We could do two and then see how it works out, or if we think that the top three, if you want to just give me your top three now, and then you figure who has. Up to you guys. I mean, I don't think that there's necessarily a right or wrong way of doing it.
I'd rather give the top two.
Want to give the top two? All right, so let's go.
Because who knows that last person?
That's right. Let's go with the top two for right now. And we can start, start to my right with Councilmember Delmar.
Oh, I, my top two would be Deb Sheridan and Andy Benscombe.
Okay. Mayor pro temp.
Deb Sheridan and Meredith Keith, and I just want to say why. I mean, everything that was just said about Deb, I concur with. I worked with her on the General Plan Steering Committee, and I just found that she's not only very outspoken, but she does it in a way that, you know, gets things done, and she is really a hard worker, energetic. And Meredith Keith also is pretty impressive. She's done a lot of good things, and, you know, Fourth of July Committee, she seems to be involved in everything. Having grown up here, I think she's a good choice, and that's what distinguishes her in my mind versus the others, is the amount of volunteer work that she has done in Sierra Madre. Mr. Benscombe has some pretty good things on his resume, but not yet in Sierra Madre, other than he owns a, he works here in town and just moved here, which is a good thing. Mr. Loera, you know, again, he's worked here 40 years, but he's just now starting to get involved in things, which I think is great, but I just, it's hard for me to choose him over the two that I suggested, just because of their history of volunteerism.
I would just add, because of course Deb, I worked with Deb on the General Plan.
Oh, that's right.
So, I did. But for, for Mr. Benscombe, I thought it was interesting that he does work in the city and then became a resident, and I, I thought that would be a good link between our businesses and our communities, so.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Goss?
All four of these people are imminently qualified. This is a tough one for me. I have two that I think are a shade better than the other two, but I think all four of these folks could do this job, and I think all four would be good. My top pick is Meredith Keith. I echo the comments. I've heard about her. I feel like she's got a good mix of experience here in town, volunteerism here in town. I think, I like Dave Loera, though. I think, having grown up here, he has had some activity in here in town, and he's got a long history here in town. So I, I leaned towards that. He's a townie, as it were. And, and, you know, I like, I, it's a tough call for me, but that would be my second.
So, yeah, this was tough for me as well. I mean, I, all of these, I'd be happy with any, any two of these. My picks are Meredith Keith and Dave Loera, and for many of the same reasons, you know, Meredith grew up here, she's done a good job on the Fourth of July Committee. Dave Loera, again, he was, he's truly a townie. I mean, he's been here his whole life, and I think he'd do a great job, and I've known him for years. Also known Deb Sheridan for years, and I talked to Andy throughout this application process, and I thought he was great. Which leaves us with Meredith Keith with three votes.
And I would be happy with Meredith.
Okay. So Meredith Keith with three votes, so we now have Deb Sheridan with two votes, Dave Loera with two votes, and Andy Bencosme with one. We can, we can discuss the other, the other three and, you know, do away with the previous votes and just talk about them separately, or if, if anyone wants to change their vote or keep it the same. I know right now we have Councilmember Delmar voting for Mr. Bencosme. We have Councilmember Goss.
I would actually, I, I would be in consensus to go with Meredith, if all of you all.
Oh, so you would move that to Meredith?
Yeah.
So four, okay. And then your other one is for Deb. So now we have two for Mr. Loera and two for Mr. Sheridan. Ms. Sheridan. Sorry, Deb, she's going to watch this. So we have two, two.
And I would just argue that Deb has the experience that you're looking for, for the community services. The other candidate, although he's been here for a long time and has, does have experience, and I think would be wonderful, I know that Deb knows, has what you need to do. And she has a proven record.
Yeah, and I agree. And again, the, the issue I have with Mr. Loera is that the only thing he's done is served on the UUT Committee. He really hasn't volunteered. I really pushed him, talking to him, and I think that's kind of a tough one to start off, just with an appointment to a commission, when you really haven't, you know, other than you just grew up here. I, I'm really struggling with how that would qualify him over Deb Sheridan. I would put the question the other way, why would you choose any of these over Deb? That's the way I'd put it.
Mr. Goss?
You mean Meredith?
No, we've already decided on Meredith.
Meredith is, is in.
We've got two votes for Dave.
I told you it was a close call. I, I do understand that Deb has a considerable amount of experience here. I don't know, I'm weighing experience. I think growing up here in town and going through all the activities, in the pool, in the park, doing a little, like, I think gives you one heck of an insight into community services. And I don't dispute the fact that Deb has those insights, but from a different perspective.
And she raised.
So for me, it's a very close call.
And she raised her children, so she went through all those things with her children here. Yeah.
Well, I mean, we are, yeah, I mean, and, and I'll just, I don't want to disparage anyone over, you know, I think that Deb is great, and I think Dave's great, and I think that they both would be great on the commission. Again, I know the, both of them extremely well, and, you know.
Let me bring it back when we finish here.
Yeah, exactly. And I, I think at this point, we can just bring it back and, and do a tie-breaking vote with Councilmember Eras Mendi. And I'm sure she'll be thrilled with that. But, you know, at this point, though, Madam City Manager, do we eliminate Mr. Bencosme because of that, or do we leave? It seems like we have a two-horse race now. I don't know what, what the proper, or what can we do? You know, is he now eliminated if we go forward and just consider the two? Can we do that?
You can do that.
Okay. So I would recommend that we keep Deb Sheridan and Dave Loera on for, I guess, the next, the next meeting. And then we can just have a vote.
Could we have a vote on Meredith Keith for the one, then?
Yeah, so we can have a formal, a formal vote. You know, all those in favor for Meredith Keith, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. So we have one Community Services Commissioner, and maybe we can have Dave and Deb have a little debate in front of us.
Yeah, that, actually, that's a, that's a good idea.
We can bring, we can bring them both, no?
Will Deb be back in two weeks?
I don't think she's coming back till, like, July 17. I mean, she might come back a little bit.
Oh, really?
Do I have to push it out two meetings, to the second meeting in July?
Look, unless there's a, a real need to have that, that extra person on the commission right now, I would, I wouldn't mind pushing it back for Deb to be able to come and, and talk, but it's up to the council, is.
Yeah, I think if we're going to have one, we should have both of them and invite them to come.
July 22, 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to item number seven, or the new item number eight, the budget update.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we, we, we want to make copies of the PowerPoint presentation because that helps you take notes. We're making those right now, just in the, can we go forward to number nine very quickly? By the time we finish that, we'll be ready for.
Yeah, and before we do that, we are five to 10. Do we want to push forward and talk about the budget? If we did, we'd have to, as a council, agree to go to 10:30, or do we?
I can tell you the budget will be more than 10:30.
Right. And so, and that's my point being that, do we want to spend half an hour and probably not finish, or do we want to push this to the next meeting?
My, my preference is to wait till Councilmember Eras Mendi comes back, because I think we're going to have to, you know.
We're going to have to have a conversation.
We're all in this together. This is nothing we're going to do tonight.
Yep.
And my.
But can I just say, I love the graphs.
Thank you.
And the way it's all presented, it's so nice. Thank you. I don't know whose idea it was, but that was great.
Did we, did the Open Gov, Open Gov, Open.
We're still sharing.
Why am I, I'm like stumbling over it?
We're sharing our wonderful ideas with them, so we'll...
Have they not been able to kick out graphs for us?
Not exactly like this, yet. We're, we're working on it.
Well, we need to lean on them. Okay, well, let's, we can do the strategic plan update.
We can do the strategic plan update. If someone could let Director Schneider know...
We can.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I think one of your directors has a question.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm very sorry.
JPI.
There is one item, there is one item, thank you, Director Cox. There's one item, and it won't be, take very long. There's one item on the budget. There's actually...
What's the time-sensitive?
The time, the really time-sensitive thing is the...
The JPI payment?
The JPI payment, because that has to be made before...
July 1st.
You're right, June 30th, July 1st. I can give you the very quick readers di, it's towards the back of your report, starting on page 13 to 15. So we are going to item number seven, the budget, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city has all of its, its liabilities, workers' comp programs, all of our insurance is part of a risk pool. Because of a change in methodology and calculating what each of the member agencies pays, it ended up in causing a large financial liability for the city in 2010 of $2.1 million. For one or two years, the city wasn't required to pay any of that down. And, but we did start making payments. The city was put on a, it's a six-year payment plan to pay down that liability. The liability number fluctuates depending upon the city's actual experience. Claims get closed out. Initially, they're reserved for a certain amount, goes through the process, it settles for X amount. If it settles for less, the total value of that claim goes down. If it settles for more, what we have to pay goes up. So the amount, the amount fluctuates. This year, we were notified that the amount decreased, resulting in an opportunity for us to, and it's what staff is recommending, there was 1.1, that's a big number, there is $1.1 million included in the current fiscal year's budget to make this, the, this payment. Technically, we could make a smaller payment because of this, call it a refund. Director Cox hates when I call it a refund. But there, we, there's an opportunity to make a smaller payment. Staff recommends we make the bigger payment so we can pay down this liability sooner. Similar to the, the, considered earlier this evening, on the consent count of the OPEC, you know, when we can pay these things off quicker, it does help our budget in the future, because we no longer have to budget that much money as we go out in future years. And it's a future years, as you're all aware, when we need the, the reduction in expenditure. So we would recommend you authorize us paying the full 1.1 million that's included in the city's budget.
And to be clear, in layman's terms, this is just approving what we had already budgeted. I mean, this isn't anything above and beyond what we'd already said we were going to pay. Yeah.
Did I, she's okay.
I'm fine with that.
Just a quick question about it, yeah. I, I just don't, perhaps Director Schneider can answer it.
That's Cox, actually.
Oh, it's, oh, really?
Yeah. Cox is the expert on this.
Okay, all right. So I'm on page 14 of 16. And I just had trouble understanding the second paragraph, and it's closing with, this is why, even if we paid off the entire outstanding retrospective balance this year, the city will have an outstanding retrospective deposit due next year.
Right. That is what City Manager Aguilar had mentioned, that the, it fluctuates based off of our current claims. So they make a, basically, an estimate of what it's going to be in the future. So we've paid off what they think it's going to be in the future, but if the claim actually ends up being more than that, and so every year, it's readjusted. And we're at a time period right now that we'll still get them guaranteed for the next couple of years. When we get five or six years out, we won't get them. And they're going to be smaller at this point in time.
Okay, so let me ask, if, if that's, okay, the, the retrospective balance is calculated on what claims have already come in, and an estimate of what it will take to settle those claims?
Correct. And the retrospective specifically is before the annual contribution started. So it's basically claims before, I think it's 2012.
Okay, so the, the balance is an estimate.
Correct.
So why does it say the city will have? What if the estimate was too high, and we paid it off?
It could have, I, I could have put may have, but, but because we're aware we're at in the repayment system, they've pretty much assured us that we will continue to have payments for the next year or two. Once we get three, four, or five years out, if the claims are all gone, then we might not have them. But because we still have active claims with the JPI, we know we're still going to be making payments.
But they, but the, again, my...
We could get really, we could get really lucky. That's what the advice that they gave us in our budgeting.
Here's what's bothering me. If it's an estimate, to me, an estimate means, I'm, I'm just guessing, but 50% chance it could be higher, 50% chance it could be lower. So why does it say it will?
But the odds, the odds are more of a 90%, it's going to be 10%. So it is an estimate. It's like a budget. And they tell us that so that we continue to budget to pay it, so that we don't all of a sudden find ourselves in a position thinking that there was nothing, when there actually is something.
It's more of a function of, we have so many claims that are still open right now. As we get three and four years out, they're, they're closed out. That's when we'll start seeing them. But we have so many at this point in time that are still open, unresolved.
All right.
And if, yeah.
It's conservative.
Okay.
Next year, we'll use the word may.
They do it in, in health benefits as well. Like, they base your premiums on your claim utilization. So, and that's basically what they're doing. So they...
But that's the going forward, though.
No, they look at your past claim utilization, and they say, based on that, we think, we as a company will have to pay this much out, so this is what your premium is going to be. It's just all on your past claim utilization, is how they, they predict the future.
But the, the claim, your premium is your prospective.
Our annual contribution is our prospective. And so that's the 700,000 number. That's the prospective amount based off of what they think we're going to do in the future. The retrospective is based off of all the claims prior to them switching to the prospective model.
All right, well, thanks for clearing that up. And I...
Clear as mud, right?
No, no. I, no, I'm not confused. I'm just, like I said, it just kind of bothers me, but that's okay. I mean, if it's not a 50% probability one way or the other, I'm okay. You explained it, and that's good, you know. So, but I am in favor of paying down any, you know, using that money to pay down the debt, so to speak.
Yep.
It's insurance. Nothing is for sure.
Okay, thank you for that, yeah.
Thank you, Director Cox. Any more questions for, for staff? Open this up to public comment, I guess, on this one item, to extend, anyone wants to say anything?
Hi, Barbara Lee Klein. Not really a comment. I'm just curious, how long have we had this in place for the city of Sierra Madre? How many years has it been?
Just started, just two years ago, right?
Five years?
The JPA?
Five years, seven years?
No, the city's been in the JPA for more than 20, 30 years?
Oh, no, not at all.
Yes.
For this type of retirement?
No, no, it's not retirement.
It's not retirement.
It's workers' comp claims.
And liability.
Okay, then, I mean, speaking...
But the retrospective part came a couple of years ago, and they notified it.
The formula change only happened about 2010-ish, yeah?
Yes, that's when they told us, now, you got to pay this off on a six-year plan.
And that's where we had this huge lump sum.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, 2010, they just told us what the scary amount was. They didn't start the six-year plan until about 2012. There was a two-year period where it was voluntary to make payments. And that did work too well.
They let, they let their cities get their financial houses in order.
Would there be any safeguard or any reason to hold on to and take the lower estimate of what to do instead of pay off? Is there any safeguarding that would, would assist the city? Anything coming up? Otherwise, no?
The reason why we're paying it off, just so the public knows, and thank you for the question, Barbara Lee, the reason why we're paying this off quicker now is so that we shave off two, hopefully, two years of the payment on the back end, so that when we get into the years where we're showing deficits, we'll have an extra $200,000 to $300,000 to actually go towards that deficit. So that's why we're paying it off quicker. Is, I guess, a simple explanation. I'll bring it back for a vote on this item. Or, I, sorry, I keep asking this. Do we actually need a vote on this, or have we given enough direction?
There's consensus. We're firm with consensus. One last question. I just have Director Schneider, are we okay going to the next? I know you wanted to have, Director Schneider wanted to be able to input, because we start July 1st, a new fiscal year, the new FY 14, 15 numbers into the system.
You can always put them in and change them.
We can always put them in and change them. That's what the staff report originally recommended. If you could just allow us to use, just for now, put in the numbers that were, you've seen two count, it's been three, this is the third council meeting. If you can allow us to put those money, those numbers in, you can change them when we come back. You can revise the expended...
What numbers would you have put in otherwise?
The ones that would have shown the deficit, the original deficit that we adopted at bi, the biannual period, which would have shown a much lower property tax and the deficit budget for the general fund. And we don't want to show that. We want to show the more current revenues.
So this, this shows how much of a surplus, again, 200?
184, 181, this, right now.
That, that's, that's the big variance there, that we would either show a deficit, because that's what's been adopted. Otherwise, that's what I can put in for July 1st. Either one can be amended. It's just...
I'm fine putting up the updated numbers, because those are the actual numbers.
And they can be amended. If the council takes budget reductions, we can amend it.
Okay.
Yes, but these are ifs. Are we scheduling that? Are we going to agendize that?
Scheduling what, sir?
We're going to do the numbers, that's fine. But I do want to discuss this.
We're bringing this item, we're bringing it back.
Oh, it's coming back on the next meeting.
Yeah, the next, the next meeting.
We'll do the full presentation.
It just allows me to do a little mechanics on the software.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can start paying for July 1st. Okay, thank you. There's consensus for that. We're good. The strategic plan update, this is actually your first plan that you're seeing with modifications, because as the council is aware, you just adopted your new strategic plan in April of 2014. We'll get the, the slide going very quickly, so people can follow along at home. On the, the first goal of maintaining and improving the city infrastructure, we were to present a sidewalk master plan at the July 8th council meeting. We are recommending, in fact, this might even go later now, because of the large items we had on tonight's agenda, and now the budget's been pushed forward, we actually will probably revise that to sometime in September. Otherwise, we'll be here till midnight. On July 22nd, we were going to present to the city council, issuing an RFP for the East Tunnel Improvement Study. That is on target. July 22nd, presenting a plan to manage the continuing water discoloration problem. As you're aware, the consultant was hired, and we do expect, we're hoping by July 22nd, to have a preliminary plan to the city council, so you can see the progress that has been made on that one. By September 9th, present a report to the city council on the conversion of our disinfectant from chlorine to chloramine. Again, it's tied to the item before, and the consultant has been retained. Under maintaining and improving the infrastructure, present a report to the city council for completion of the fiscal year 13, 14, street improvement project. We do have to delay the completion of this project slightly. Michalinda is partially in Sierra Madre, partially in Pasadena, and we are going, having a delay in working with Pasadena, but we're trying to work that out. On September 23rd, present a recommendation, city council, for action regarding replacing our obsolete voicemail phone systems on target. September 23rd, the adopt a treatment program on target. This, October 1st, hiring a consultant to conduct a physical assessment of the library building. That is on target. May 13, as part of the mid-year budget, seek policy direction regarding the sunsetting of the UUT. That, we're considering this on target. It's been an ongoing topic on your council agendas in May, and June, and in July. We'll be, still be talking about it. On 8, on July 8th, presenting a summary FY 14, 15 budget pamphlet for public distribution. We're going to revise that out a little bit. We, we might bring back a draft with, with, I want to say, I don't want to say made-up numbers, but until the council decides what the 14, 15 budget looks like, we really can't complete that pamphlet. But we, we could start working on at least what it would look like. September 9th, seeking authorization from the city council to go out to bid for banking services on target. September 23rd, an action plan to allocate the development impact fees that we've already collected to eligible projects. That's on target. September 23rd, financial update to the city council on our sewer and water utility funds. That's on target. Under attracting, develop, and retaining staff, June 9th, we were to bring a plan to the council for salary compaction in light of the new minimum wage standards. You did get, you, you received the part-time employee part of that at your last council meeting. We're bringing back the full-time employee portion of that, still aiming for the July 22nd agenda. By July 1st, the mayor and Mayor Protem have been meeting with department heads for feedback. That's on target. By September 1st, the mayor and Mayor Protem is going to be meeting with all the department staffs at each facility to get feedback. That's on target. October 1st is completing the priorities, we call them the number two priorities in the adopted recruitment and retention plan. That's all on target. Under attract, we, develop and retain staff continued, develop and present to the city council for consideration alternative organizational structures by October 1st. That's on target. And then by September 1st, present a customer service and communication enhancement plan, and that's on target. Under preserving our small-town character with a vibrant downtown, hold at least three neighborhood watch meetings throughout the city. That's ongoing, and it's on target. April, July 22nd, obtain direction from the council on the marketing and branding plan. That's on target. August 1st, status report on implementation of a plan to enhance the city's volunteer program and the number of volunteer signups. We are revising that to September 9th. On September 1st, a first draft of the general plan, that is being revised to November 1st. And then by this, October 1st, review the draft EIR by the Planning Commission presented to the council. That follows the item above, so we've put that on, just by, by December 1st, 2014. Make Sierra Madre an environmentally sustainable community, especially regarding water, recommending to the council action on how to respond to the Raymond Basin Management Board decision regarding the East Raymond Basin issue. That is done by July 8th. Progress on making sure that the tree mitigation monies that are paid into the environmental fund actually results in the planting of trees. That is on target. And then July 8th is a option for a possible property sale inspection program. We're projecting that that's going to be on target at your next meeting also. Initiate a review of the water conservation ordinance with the intent of bringing the ordinance before the city council in November 2014. That would be the Environment, Natural Resources Commission. They are, have begun work on that. So that is on target. September 23rd, the feasibility of making West Tunnel water available to residents in case of emergency. That's on target. And I believe that's, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Just say, I'm glad to see that the East Tunnel thing is on track. Something we've been wanting for a couple of years now, so that's great.
I saw a lot of things on target.
And it's great.
Yeah. That's good.
I will say that there's a few things, especially the last category, where we're going to bring back July 8th. In light of, in light of the budget, we, we, you know, we might have to, yeah, might have to consider that. Open this up for public comment?
They're going the other direction.
Yeah. I don't, I don't mind, I don't blame them.
Especially that one leaving right now.
Hi, Barbara Lee. Not sure where else to bring this up, so I'm going to address it for the strategic plan update. A couple of things, if you could go into a little bit more detail on the property inspection plan and what that entails. I haven't been following. And I'm so glad that the voicemail phone system's really going to be updated. Very necessary for City Hall. But I'm going to throw it back to the police department, and I haven't addressed the chief on this. Could it be developed an alternative means of getting your car license plate in the computer system? They have nothing for low-income citizens of Sierra Madre. If you don't own a credit card, if you don't have a debit card, if you don't have access to a computer, let's say the library's closed, and you go in at 11 o'clock because you've locked yourself out of the car, or you've lost the keys, you have no way to pay the $2 fee in order to not receive a ticket. So I'd like to go back to the old-fashioned way of simply throwing the $2 in the drawer and writing a note to the morning dispatcher staff that the fee was paid, and that they can implement it into their computer system in the morning. That would help anyone that doesn't have an opportunity... That would help anyone that doesn't have an opportunity, or again, low income, I'm addressing it that way, because maybe the, that will be addressed, to go ahead and put that in as part of their plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara Lee.
And I apologize, I didn't bring it up to the chief, but this is something.
I can respond, I can respond. It is, we understand that not everyone has internet access or debit card, it is still possible to go into the police station and take, they're open 24 hours a day, and get it there over the counter.
The overnight?
It's still possible to do that, the overnight parking permits.
Barbara's shaking her head.
You still can. Chief is saying yes, and I know you can.
Okay, so our policy going forward is that we can?
We can, residents can still walk in over, we prefer, you know, as much of it to be done.
Yeah, yeah.
On the internet, but if you absolutely can't do that, you can still go into the police station and get your overnight parking permit.
Your internet's down.
Your internet's down, you don't have a printer, you don't, you don't have a computer.
Right.
You can still go into the police station.
Or you have remodeling going, so you have no printer and no internet.
Councilmember Delmar knows full well. Thank you, Barbara Lee. Any other comments? So, thank you very much, it's receiving file. Reminder that Councilmember Delmar wanted to agendize the care issue, and then I was gonna agendize the election.
One more thing, Tim.
Staff is already seeking bids for the whole sound system, the computer, everything. That's something we started about two months ago, it's wearing out, it overheats, we need to get three bids, as soon as we have two, we'll get a third, and we'll, it's going to exceed, it's going to exceed my authority to spend the money, so we'll bring it back for council authorization, but it's in the works already.
Okay, one more thing I'd like to bring up, if we could, is I'd like to suggest that we agendize filling the planning commission slot, we do have a qualified applicant, only one, and if you guys are okay with that person, I'd like to just get him seated and just move on, I don't like having the planning commission shorthanded like that, so if we can.
Could that be a consent agenda item?
We can do that.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Assuming we don't now receive a mad rush of five of them, but if we still have one by next council meeting, I'll put it on consent.
Good, great.
Any other additional items, or are we? I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Good boy.